This is the continued hearing from May the 6th. This is the Sherburne's Attorney Board of Appeals. The matter on the table is the combined 40B hearing for 41 North Main Street and 31 Hunting Lane. Genie, you still have the controls on being the host and letting people in, right?
Yeah, I made you co-host.
Okay, great. That's it's the highest point of my day so far. All right, let's cover some procedural items first and then try to lay out where we're going to go and how we're going to try to get there tonight. We have an awful lot of ground to cover. First of all, while we have town council here, I want to go over some of the, some of the technical matters. Is there anything new on the subject of site control, Mr. Haverty or Mr. Terry? I think the answer is no other than the town meeting vote.
Correct. The litigation is still in the same stance, still waiting for the new appraisal and still on for a status conference.
And while town meeting did vote by a large margin to authorize, I think it was the town's appraisal amount to be spent, saying that that is, ends the issue is a little bit like taking the rabbit and putting it in the hat, because the whole point is there are more appraisals to come and more fighting to be done. And Mr. Haverty will be having it out with you, Mr. Terry, on whether or not the town has any rights to exercise anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
The city came prepared with props, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I tried to entertain. If you can't be smart, be entertaining. That's my, that's my motto. Okay, next up, while we have town council here, I want to talk about a question for you, Mr. Haverty, which I think I know the answer. I think you've answered it several times, but, but it's your call, not ours. Do you have any plan to extend the hearings?
No, Mr. Chairman, our intention is to close the hearing tonight.
Okay, fine. So, absent an extension from the applicant, we will have to close the hearing tonight because there are no more, there are more, no more days left. That would mean that the board would move into the deliberation phase, which is also open. People get to watch us do it if you want to. But, but, but we can't take any more new information. And as I said last time, and I think the time before that, you can't run in after we closed the hearing and say, wait, here's the expert report from God himself, or whatever, that proves there is water or there isn't water, or whatever on any issue. That will all be closed. I think it's important to point out to the applicant team that there are, I think, seven items that in my view, and I think county council agrees, you're entitled to do. I think you're entitled to not provide further information on wealth capacities other than what you've provided already. I think you're entitled to not provide any engineering of water capacity, or how the wastewater would affect the groundwater, because you only have to provide what you choose to provide. And, and if you don't provide anything, we can't peer review it. And again, I think you're entitled to do that. I think you do have the right to prevent experts hired by a butter from accessing the property to evaluate soils and water capacity. And I think you have the right to prevent experts hired by the town from accessing the property to evaluate soils and well capacity. I think you also have the right to refuse to fund town hired water capacity or water quality experts. And and you have the right to decline to extend the hearing process, which would cut off any further evidence from coming in either for or against the project. Finally, Genie, can you mute Mr. Guarino?
Can I mute who?
Yeah, okay, good. He's on mute now. I think it was just background noise.
Okay.
And finally, you do have the right to request and have requested that the ZBA waive a number. Sorry? You do have the right to request that the ZBA waive a number of local board of health and cons comm and groundwater protection requirements bearing on water capacity and groundwater protection as part of the 40B process. In fact, that's the whole point of the 40B process, is that you're asking us to waive this. But I want to remind the applicant that you're not entitled to preclude us from putting those seven factors together and seeing them as relevant evidence that if the facts on water capacity and/or groundwater protection are against you. And by choosing not to have any evidence on that, you're allowing us to go on the evidence we do have. I just want to make that clear. I think, Mr. Haverty, this is not his first rodeo. I get it. I think he gets it perfectly. I just want it clearly in the record. And, Mr. Terry, I think I've stated it correctly, but if I botched it, correct me.
No, I mean, you're, you're limited to a review of the evidence that's before you. Yes. You know, if evidence has come in that causes you a concern about health and safety related to the water, or whatever the issue is, and they choose not to provide countervailing evidence, I mean, that's their decision, and the question for you remains the same. Again, the standard is still you're, you're doing a balancing test between your concerns about local health and safety on one hand, and on the other hand is the, the need for regional affordable housing. And you have to determine whether or not there's something about the local bylaws that precludes you from waiving them.
Right, right. Well stated, and it presents the board members with, with a difficult case, which is why we're all unpaid. We're unpaid because we're volunteers, not because it's difficult.
Right.
Okay. There are a number of documents that have come in since our last meeting. I know a lot of them came in late. I'm sure various parties on various sides would like to complain that various things came in late. I'd like to point out that everybody's house is a little bit made of glass here, and that for every item that someone says, well, you got X in late, I think someone else may say, well, but you got Y in late. So, any commentary on something being late, I'd like to be limited to, we note for the record that we only got this at five today, or whatever, but without going on a great length about why that's important, or what it implies about the person submitting it. An awful lot of people have submitted an awful lot of materials. I think the person who deserves the most credit here is Genie Guthrie, because frankly, this whole process of getting things posted and distributed, that is not required under the statute or any regulation. And she has really knocked herself out to do a good, fair job for everybody. It hasn't been perfect, but Genie, it's been really, really good, and we thank you. And it's created a great record.
And I would like to echo that as well. Genie's been fantastic.
Thankful.
All right. And that may be the last thing we agree on all night, but that's the way it goes.
Well, we've agreed far too much throughout this process anyways, Mr. Chairman, so it's.
That's all right. That's all right. There are a number, with, with the new documents that came in, there were a number of people that I thought were asking to be heard, and I wanted to read through seven that I thought I had, and then I bet a bunch of hands will go up with people I did not wish. And these are people in addition to the applicant. Lynn, obviously, you, you, you sent me a list last night of things you'd like to speak about, and you definitely get a chance. So on my list, I think Andrea Stiller wanted to be heard, right? You can just nod if I can see you. What, is Jo Sagar on? Did she wish to be heard? That was the woman who had a well.
Yes, I, I am on, and I would like to be heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garrison, you wrote on the 26th that you want your letter to speak for itself, or do you wish to be heard?
I, I'll play that by ear. I don't need to speak up separately from the letter.
All right, maybe.
I might comment at some point.
And by the way, I'm not, not saying yes now, does not.
Right.
Ability to, to raise your hand later. Okay, Roger Demler, I think I saw a letter from him. Roger, are you on? Do you wish to be heard?
I'm gonna get off, yeah, I'd like to.
Oh, there he is.
A couple of comments.
Well, no, we're just, no, we're not asking for your comments now. I'm just asking if you want to be heard when, when the time comes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Paul, you wrote twice. Where are you, Paul? I don't see you on the screen. You must be on one of the other screens. Paul Pacheco?
Yeah, I'm here, Rick.
Okay, and you, yes, you wish to be heard?
Yes, I have some comments at the appropriate time.
Great. Okay. Creative Land and Water Engineering, DeShawn Wang, I read your letter to say that you wish to be heard. I don't see you on the.
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay, great. Thank you, sir. And then the Board of Health sent in a memo on the 6th. Is Daryl or anyone from the Board of Health waiting to speak? Genie, did I see a chat from Daryl saying she's tied up in another meeting?
Daryl said she had to go to the select. The select board meeting, and then she'll be back.
All right, so we'll look back, but I'm going to assume she wants to speak. All right, so who else did I, that I did not list wishes to speak? Sounds like Marion Neutra from the planning board?
Yes, to speak for the planning board, please.
Okay. Just trying to get sort of Santa's list. Who's naughty and nice and wants to speak and does not?
If you can see me, it's Mike Blesser.
Okay. And anyone who said, said in something in writing, you are not obliged to speak, and in, in fact, especially if you said in something in writing, please do not read it to us. Our time is short. We've, there's been an awful lot of material that we have been over before. Likewise, if it's an issue that's been covered, just like at town meeting, repeating it another 10 times is not going to help. So please, please limit your remarks to, to, to new matters as opposed to reiterating old matters. Sean Colleen, do I see you on? Do you wish to speak for the DPW? I saw you sent in something late.
Sean's got to be at the select board meeting, but he'll be, I'm going to text him when it's.
Okay, right. I'm, I'm going to presume he's going to want to speak. They're. Zach Ward and, and Mr. Malinowski, I'm not sure if they really caught up with each other on what was wanted on firetruck turning radiuses. Is there anyone here to speak from, from the fire department?
Zach, I'm going to text Zach when it's, when it's his time to speak, because he's also in the select board meeting.
It's almost as if they think that meeting is more important than mine. This is so insulting.
And, and we are prepared to speak on that tonight as well.
Yes, and, and I saw that Mike Malinowski sent in a new plan, so, right, that's, okay. Who else am I missing? All right, so I've got, and obviously, other people may be inspired to speak during the course of, during the course of the discussion. Okay. So we talked about site control, we talked about the extensions. Mr. Town Council, Mr. Terry, I think we might, at the risk of making a mistake, be able to let you go at this point. Mr. Haverty, do you have some surprise to pop on me that I'm going to wish I still had Mike next to me?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no surprises at the ready. Obviously, I will address anything that comes up during the course of the meeting, but I have nothing in particular I'm planning to address.
All right, Mr. Terry, well, as always, thank you for your service.
You can always text me if you need me to pop back in, but I'll bid you all good night.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Town Council. Okay. Lynn. There's going to be an awful lot that we cover tonight that we don't agree on, or that, that the applicant and the assembled substitutes do not agree on. I wonder if I could ask you to start off by maybe sewing up the issues that are agreed, open issues that, that either are solved or that you think are solved. Is, is the fire department one of those?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Lynn Sweet LDS Consulting Group, Wellesley, Mass. For the record. Um, well, I'm not sure that we, I can't say that we've resolved anything since the last meeting, but there are four areas that we would like to present tonight in the hope of resolving those.
Please go ahead. Perfect.
Okay, so the first thing that I'm, I'm going to just pop up on the screen is just one piece of information we haven't shared previously, but there's been a lot of questions and concerns regarding our site plan on Hunting Lane about density, and how this isn't the way things are done in Sherburne, and so, and I'm not going to belittle the point, I'm just going to say that the units that we have on, the density that we have units per acre on, on a hunting lane without including, you know, the second, the second parcel and all of the buffer is, is below the last four or five projects that have been permitted in, in Sherburne. And you'll see that the majority of the projects that have been permitted in Sherburne have been for seniors and, and, and not, not for families. So I, I just want to say, if we're, you know, when we're talking about density, that this is less dense, and, you know, by way of a unit per acre. And I'm going to, I'm going to leave it at that. The next document that I'm going to, going to try and bring up here, while I scroll through everything here, is not, is not my member of all. Is a plan that Mike Malinowski is going to run through for you to attempt to address the fire department if, with regard to measuring Powderhouse Lane. Michael, are, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can everyone hear me? This is Michael Malinowski from Allen and Major Associates, with the offices in Manchester, New Hampshire, and Weber, Massachusetts.
Michael, if I can ask you to pause. Lynn, let's, can we put the fire department to the side?
You want to come back to that one? Okay, you, do you want to get them on now, or do you want us to come back to it?
Genie, what, what's the story?
Do you want us to try and get them on now?
All right, so just, just hold, hold for a second. We'll try to get them on. I don't want to make, make Michael say this twice.
Michael, do you want to actually bring up your screen so that you can do the pointing?
Yes.
Are you, are you okay with me doing my best Vanna?
You can do, you can play Vanna White tonight.
You know, and if they're not available, we can hit the other two topics, which were, we have Dan Wells on from Goddard to talk about the water behind the house, and then talk about the butter's plans. Those were the four areas we were hoping to cover and not take up a lot of time.
Right. I agree. Let's, let's give it a minute. Yes?
This is Sean Colleen, if you can hear me. I'm trying to get Zach. I'm with him, but he's around the corner.
Okay, and Sean, Sean, Sean?
Yes.
If it's not really easy, if you can't do it in two minutes, we'll just defer this part and come and loop back to it. It's okay.
The problem is the select board, we don't know how long they're going to go, and we'll get sucked back into that.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll hold, we'll hang on for a second. Just let us know. Thank you.
And, and just to, just to fill some space, we did, we submit the waivers, we submitted with Genie's help. I had some technical difficulties. Sometimes new technology isn't as good as, as old technology. A red line of both the waivers and a clean version where we tried to delete a lot of the items we talked about that shouldn't be in there, and expand on items that were discussion points.
Right, that's an excellent point to pick up while we're waiting. Well, Haverty, to me, they seem to track exactly what you had told us you would do, which is, you walked us through the waivers last time and said how you were going to change them one way or another, had to clean up which ones were procedural, which ones weren't, which ones you were asking for, which ones you weren't asking for. And it appears that you did exactly that. Is that your story? Uh-oh.
I will speak for him that, yes, that, that is what we did.
I'm sorry, I was muted. You would think I wasn't a rookie on this. Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what we did. With regards to the procedural ones, I did include some language on several of them, that if the board determines that a waiver is necessary, that we request a waiver, but really, it isn't necessary. They, they're procedural waivers.
Great, thank you. I, I, I thought those were helpful and clear, and I thank you both for the, for the difficulty of putting those together. Okay, and I think I've just seen Zach Ward enter the room. Metaphorically. Chief Ward, are you there?
He is there.
I am here. Thank you. Sorry about that. Having some technical difficulties.
You're, you're not alone. Okay, so can, can you, do you have video where you are, sir? Can you see what's up on the screen?
I can, yes.
Okay, great. All right, so Lynn, why don't you go right back to where you were, or Mike Malinowski? We have the fire chief on. Tell us how you think you've solved things.
We basically did what Sean and his group did. We went out and physically measured pavement along Powderhouse Lane. We measured roughly in the same locations that Sean and his group had measured. We have a little less than 15 feet at the, the edge of the property where Powderhouse Lane starts and enters onto the subject property. We had about 20 feet worth of sort of usable pavement, what we deemed as usable. It was between two cold joints. There is excess pavement behind the existing parking stalls there for some extra maneuverability, and the street does get wider as you get out towards Main Street. The one distance that we did not pick up closer to the crosswalk, we sort of approximated it about 24 and a half feet based on the aerial image. Sean's group had actually measured that to be about 28 feet at that location. So we do agree that it is a little bit narrow as it, at the right of way where it enters onto our property, but as you can see, based on our proposal, we are providing a full 24 feet worth of pavement out and onto the site. One of the other things that you will note is, based on our discussions with Sean and Chief Ward, was proposing the installation of a dry hydrant out at Main Street to help alleviate some of their concerns about how to fight a fire should there be. In our discussions, the fire department, as a regular practice, has a fire pond out behind the fire station, which they would pull water from and run hoses up Powderhouse Lane to fight a fire if there should be a fire at the development. And their concern was if they laid hoses down Powderhouse Lane, that they would not be able to access that road, and it would basically shut it off. So one of the things that we've attempted to do is alleviate that through the installation of a dry hydrant, where the fire department could lay hoses along Main Street in their normal practice and feed the fire suppression system that is in, in the property. There's several hydrants along the way, and this line also goes directly to the building. It's an existing right of way, an existing paved street, public access. We did review Sean's memo that we received this afternoon. He, there are some pictures that show firetrucks turning, coming down the road with a vehicle stopped at the intersection. Although not ideal, that vehicle that is shown in Sean's pictures is not an immovable object. That truck can back up. And my understanding is that if you have a fire apparatus that's coming, you're supposed to move out of the way to provide them movement. If that vehicle was not there, you've got 28 feet worth of roadway for that emergency vehicle to turn down. So we have roughly the same dimensions that Sean has illustrated in his letter. We think we've provided at least an alternative for not laying fire hoses down Powderhouse Lane to keep that open should there be an emergency. We also have a secondary means of egress out to Hunting Lane should there also be an emergency as well. So we'd be happy to discuss with Chief Ward and Sean. Any, any additional concerns that they may have?
Lynn, while it interrupts your presentation, given the subject matter, given that both CMD and, and fire are very interested in this, I'd suggest that maybe they speak up now while we have them.
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Colleen, Chief Ward. What do you say to Mr. Malinowski politely?
Yeah, I can go first. I, you know, he said, Mr. Colleen first, so I was trying to give you the, the option there. No, I'm just kidding. So, yeah, a couple of things. I'm certainly glad to hear about the hydrant that we could, that we could use to feed the pipe going down to the complex. That's refreshing here. A big part of that is going to be the location of that particular hydrant. If it's on the wrong side of a road or at a bad corner, you know, that could potentially cause some other issues for us. Going back to the entrance on Powderhouse Lane, you know, I appreciate the comment that a vehicle parked there could move. But with, with my experience, a car stopped at a stop sign with the fire truck screaming down the road, they're, they're probably going to think the truck's going by, driving right by Powderhouse Lane. And then, you know, they're going to sit there, and if there's a car behind them, just, you know, I would, I would just assume that there's going to be nowhere for them to go. You know, and I certainly, I see the sketch on the screen. I do appreciate the measurements and, and, and so forth, but I, I still think the scenario that was in the DPW director's memo is still an issue. And I, you know, I did miss some of your presentation because I was on the select board meeting. But I, you know, I, I do feel a little bit better about it, but it's still, it still is a big issue for us. You know, we go out into calls and obviously all kinds of weather. We had a significant rainstorm and thunderstorm just last night, and I, you know, it's our job to have imaginations and to think of the worst case scenario in providing public safety for the town. And, you know, a simple storm like last night, it would be, it would be tough for an experienced fire truck driver to pull in there, never mind an inexperienced one. And I, I do have concerns with adding 64 units of housing back there. You know, obviously, there's other properties back there, you know, but they, you know, they don't really have the occupancy that this does, so. You know, I certainly don't think it's ideal in providing public safety for that, that complex.
All right, Mr. Colleen. John?
Yeah, so, I mean, we had, we didn't have a whole lot of time to draft that up today. We, I mean, we're essentially doing what we shouldn't have to be doing, which is proving that the turning radiuses of the fire apparatus don't work. That's actually a really well-turning fire truck. There was no other cars on the road. So, you know, it was, it was a best case scenario. We were trying to highlight the fact that it's a very dangerous situation. Any person parking in the wrong place, anywhere near there, is going to cause that entire complex to be out of reach of the fire department. So that, that was, and the queuing issue, we didn't really hit on. It's been hit, hit on by the engineers and the peer reviewers. There's already a queuing issue there. It has nothing to do with school. It has everything to do with the traffic that goes by it. And that's becoming clearly evident now that post-COVID traffic is coming back. You, you can't get in and out of there during the day. It's plain and simple. So you add housing, it's just going to get worse. There's no real way to prove that at the moment. The traffic counts are still low, but the traffic's backed up in all directions. The, the measurements, you know, to the layperson look like they're good. That, that's all fine and well, but turning cars in and out of a parking lot, the way they're parked, you, you're combining the use, so that's fine that you say. Route 16 is only 24 feet wide. That's great, but you don't have cars parked on both sides or coming in and out of those parking lots and, and tractor trailers moving in and out of there. When you start traversing tractor trailers in and out of those places, it's not going to work. An Amazon truck's going to be in there 40 times a day. It's going to be gridlocked, and it's going to be very dangerous.
Okay, thank you. Tom Houston, are you out there?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Does anything, I know you gave us your prior reports. Does anything new on this turning radius and the intersection of Powderhouse Lane and 16 slash 27? Anything new you see?
Well, from the dimensions, I understand it's an issue. I haven't seen the memorandum that's being discussed, but I guess the, the two comments I'd make, the ability of a vehicle that's egressing from Powderhouse Lane to move out of the way of a fire truck in the morning peak hour would be impaired by the gridlock situation that develops periodically during the peak hour. The 15-foot narrowest width is obviously marginal. The fifteen-foot narrowest width is obviously marginal. Cars are probably six and a half feet wide, typical car. So they can get by each other, but legally vehicles that are eight and a half feet wide can be on the public roads and don't require a wide load permit. So I don't know what the, the probability is that two such large vehicles would pass each other. But it is a problem with a minimum fifteen-foot pavement width.
Thank you. Lynn, I think you sort of, you sort of had the, you had the floor.
Well, I, I, I do want to have Michael speak again. There, there is not a fifteen-foot pavement width. That is the entrance of our property that is going to be expanded to twenty-four feet. Let me just bring up the plan again, but I'll
That'd be great. Thank you.
So I, I just want to make sure that, that we're not getting facts, you know, confused here. Hang on. I just want to make sure, you know, between my, my cat walking across the screen and me clicking around, that I'm not giving away, you know, the family secrets here. So, so this is, this is where, where it is currently fifteen feet. But this is going to be reconfigured and widened on both sides. This is, this is, this will be the entrance of the property. And it will be twenty-four feet all the way throughout the property. And going back to the emergency exit and entrance, that's also on, on Hunting Lane. And I, I think there may be some legal things that, that Paul might, might want to talk to on this matter as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and I will note that I, I did hear in Mike's previous testimony, the fifteen-foot width as well. And I, I had presumed that he had meant it's currently fifteen feet. I'm glad that Lynn was able to clear that up. With regards to the concerns with the DPW and the fire department, I understand that they have concerns and I don't want to diminish them, but it's an existing public way. In chapter forty B, decisional law is very clear that an applicant cannot be required to fix deficiencies in existing municipal services, including public ways. The Hilltop Reserve Limited Partnership for its Board of Appeals of Wolf Hall decision has a very great discussion in terms of what a board can and cannot do with regards to deficiencies in municipal services. So I just want to make sure that the board is aware of that.
Thank you for that. Mr. Colleen.
Let's be very clear. I'm not asking to make any improvements to Powderhouse. I think it's actually almost impossible to improve Powderhouse well enough. I want to point out that they chose to not use the existing entrance at the light. That, that's my problem with using Powderhouse. Powderhouse would make a fine emergency entrance and exit. The property enters and exits right now at the light, at forty-one North Main. That's where the driveway is. That would be safe. That would be, everyone knows that would be the safest place to enter and exit. It wouldn't cause a queuing issue. It blocks and it
I, I, I think that
Let, let him finish.
So I, I'm not, I'm not advocating for improving Powderhouse in any manner, and I'm not advocating for them to do it. But somebody's going to be forced to improve Powderhouse to make the accommodations and it's going to make an unnecessarily dangerous situation.
Okay, thank you. Good, good, fair point. Lynn?
You know, just, just a couple of points of facts here. We were asked in the early stages of this process and at the hell stage of the process to, to not use the driveway because of the grading issues. So, so we did accommodate those concerns. We, I, I think what's gotten lost in this whole discussion is the fact that we moved the buildings very far away from the road. We sunk them down and we did create two means of access in and out. We also, at previous meetings, and, and I feel like this, this discussion has occurred previously, we have committed that if and when the town is able to secure the funding for the engineering and, and they do want to, are able to improve the intersection that the applicant, if they're able to, would be willing to, to move their en- entrance and pay their fair share. We did cover that when Jeffrey Dirk was here from Vaness.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Before I jump off?
Go ahead. And, and Sean, don't jump off because there's, I think another issue we're going to watch on, but go ahead.
That's fine, but I'm trying to not keep commenting, but this has been raised a couple of times. The grading issue that exists was the other mid-block driveway. That was the gravel driveway that goes to small outbuilding or apartment house. That was, there's no grading issue with the driveway that comes out of the light. It's graded very well. So the town never asked the developer to not use the driveway at the light. It was the mid-block that's opposite of Powderhouse from the light, which again would be a similar issue. It would have, it would wreak havoc on the queuing between Hunting Lane and, and the light. So.
Fair enough. All in the record, thank you. Lynn, I think there was another fire issue you wanted to touch on while we had Chief Ward in and, and Sean Colleen. Wasn't it the turning radius of the trucks up in the thirty-one Hunting? Or is that solved? Is everybody happy on that one?
I'm, I'm not aware of there being any other turning radius issues. They, the, the one that they had wanted us to illustrate was the one that the DPW did illustrate with the, 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 the vehicle parked on.
Mike Malinowski, maybe I'm the other one confused. I saw what looked to me like a new, new plan for a fire truck turning around up there. You just sort of closing the loop with Chief Ward, making sure everybody was on the same page?
That's correct. At one of our last meetings, Chief Ward had asked for an additional turning movement for vehicles coming off of Hunting Lane, accessing the emergency access. So we had provided those in addition to the ones coming in off of Powderhouse.
Okay. All right, so by my scoring, I think we have talked about, put the bid and ask out on the table, all of the fire departments and DPW concerns, ninety percent of which, if I'm hearing the two gentlemen from the town correctly, relate to the use of Powderhouse Lane as opposed to some problem up on the thirty-one Hunting site.
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay, all right. Gents, thank you very much. Go back to the much more important meeting you have with the selectmen.
Thank you.
Okay, Lynn, you were, you were mid-presentation. You had, I think, four items. You wanted to talk about density, fire, 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 turning radius. You have your
I think, I think we're headed towards water. And we had submitted a memo, I would say midday today from our wetland scientist who has joined us this evening. And looking at my notes, and of course I can't, I can't find
I think, I think number three on your list was NOBIS, but I think NOBIS is now mooted. Because if Mr. Haverdy is correct that we're not extending, then I think we all agree, regardless of anybody's right or, or lack of right to, to ask anybody to pay for anything for NOBIS, there's no time for them to do anything. And therefore I suggest we skip past NOBIS.
Makes sense?
Oh, you're muted or something? You're not coming through?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay. Sorry, I just wasn't speaking very loudly, I guess. Didn't make the same mistake twice.
Okay.
If we're not extending, NOBIS is, is, is a moot issue?
Okay. Um, I'm sorry. What, what was, what was next on your list? Am I going out of order?
I'm just reading from your list, or what I thought was your list. Response to butters relative to wells and water behind the house.
Yes.
And by the way, I think we want to hear Lynn's presentation on this, but I think we're going to loop back to what I see as the big issues, which is going to be water and groundwater contamination. But Lynn, this is your
Yes, we do. We also have Dave, Dave Formato here with us, but we did want to address the issue that came up on the sidewalk.
The vernal pool. Go ahead.
First, yeah, let's, let's lose that from our vocabulary this evening.
Vernal pool, yes or no? Okay, how's that?
Vernal pool, no. Not on our site. I also, and I don't know if I put this in my email, but we do have Dan with us from Goddard, Dan Wells from Goddard Consulting, who worked with Michael to go out and walk the site to, to do some measurements. And the site has been dry for two and a half weeks at this point. And even after last night's heavy rain, there is no more, there is no water there today. So I'm gonna, I don't know if you want Dan to just summarize his memo for everyone because it came in very take questions.
Yes, I, I, I've read it, but it did come in late and so people might not have seen it. So it'd be good if he'd summarize it.
And I'm happy to bring up the map if he wants me to do that.
I can do it on my end too, Lynn. Maybe I'll, I'll do that. Good evening, Dan Wells from Goddard Consulting. And I will briefly go over. So I'm a biologist and wet, wetland scientist and I have expertise in vernal pool identification and certification. So I was asked to evaluate this area. You can see, I think we're all familiar with where this area is to the west of the existing house. So I went out on April thirtieth of this year. There happened to be about just over a half inch of rain early that morning before I was there. And so I have some photographs. This is what the, this depressional area certainly had standing water in it, but it was quite shallow. This is facing to the west, I'm sorry, facing to the south. This is kind of the southern half of it. And you can clearly see that stone wall which demarcates the property boundary. Here's another view showing kind of the more northern half of the depression. And again, you can see it's, it's rather shallow. But, and this is kind of a close up, just to kind of show how, when I'm looking for vernal pool indicators, you know, having a clear visibility into the, the water is, makes all the difference. And so it was a perfectly clear morning. And I wear polarized glasses, which allows you to see right through the water in, into the bottom. So I just quite simply walked, you know, up and, up and back through this water. It was, you know, I'm, what I'm looking for is generally it's two species, spotted salamanders, which have large kind of jelly-like egg masses. And there's also wood frogs. These are the common vernal pool indicator species in Massachusetts. And so I'm out looking for these pretty much, you know, almost five days a week in late March and April. So I know, I, I timed this. This was perfectly timed to be at the time when you could see these organisms. There's some other, another creature called the fairy shrimp, which is also, I'm looking for, I have a dip net that I use to, you know, but generally you can see them swimming around in the water, especially in a clear wetland or a clear depression like this. So I, I did the survey and I did not see any of these organisms. I concluded that it would not be considered a vernal pool under the state regulations. I also looked at, well, I'll just conclude with the vernal pools, the, the local wetland bylaw has a, a separate definition. And it, it specifies that the, the depression has to hold water for a minimum of two continuous months during the spring or summer or both. Based on, it was clearly flooded when I was there, but from the applicant, I've seen photographs. And I think within two or three weeks of my visit, it was already dry. So I don't think, based on that information and, and just anecdotal reports, that this does not meet that criteria. It does not have the biological criteria of the, of the species either. So I concluded that there, there is no vernal pool in this basin. The second part I looked at in, in collaboration with Alan and Major is, is, does this qualify as an isolated land subject to flooding? There's, this is a resource area under the Wetlands Protection Act and the local wetland bylaw. The definition requires, it has to confine standing water to a volume of at least a quarter acre foot into an average depth of at least six inches. The bylaw is slightly different. It's four inches instead of six inches. Otherwise they're identical. And so I'll present the calculation. This, this is by Alan and Major. So it's a very detailed engineering analysis of the watershed, the water volume at different incremental depths within this basin. It was determined that the, the depth ranges from three oh seven point six to three oh seven point nine. So that alone at its maximum capacity, it's, it's not even a half a foot, not even six inches deep. So, and then you look here at the acre, acre feet cumulatively at all these elevations and it's zero point zero eight, which is well below the quarter acre foot required under both the state and local regulations. So based on this, we conclude that this is not considered a jurisdictional, isolated land subject to flooding or a vernal pool.
Thank you for that. Mr. Haverdy, I'll note for the record that this is one of those things, we're not going to get a chance to peer review because of the timing.
Just stood, Mr. Chairman, but I, but I would point out, we are not asking for any waivers of local rules or requirements relating to this. So essentially the onus is upon us. If we require the waiver, we're not going to be getting it as part of this process because we haven't asked for it. So we would have to come back and request a modification if it turns out we're not.
Okay. Fair enough. I think I saw two hands up. Mr. Garrison?
Yeah, just a quick co- comment. Obviously, I'm
If you can speak up or a little closer to your microphone, please, sir.
Obviously, just a quick comment. Obviously, I'm not a wetlands expert in any sense, but I note that Mr. Wells observed the, the pool on April thirtieth and said two weeks later it was dry. So it wasn't there for two months. It was there for January, February, March and April as observed by us. So just to make that point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lesser?
Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street Conservation Commissioner. Yeah, I guess the, the vernal pool issue is, in a way, it's received a lot of attention. I'm not sure it would ever really amount to much because it has to be a certified vernal pool in order for it to get state protections. And I doubt that the applicant is going to, to be willing to go through the certification process. But what this does seem to detract from the, distract from the fact that, as requested by the Conservation Commission, which will probably happen later, is that it was not a delineation of the wetlands. So there's no commentary about whether these are actually wetland areas there. But that will come up as part of a delineation under the, under the NOI process, under the state law. But this is a little bit separate from what we were, we were trying to get at is whether it's actually a wetland issue. But that'll have to come up later. And in terms of reviewing that. So I'll leave it, that, that's really the main, one of the major issues, but that will not be dealt with in this process, obviously.
All right. Thank, thank you, everyone, and especially thank you all for being brief. Is there anyone else who needs to be heard? Deshaun Wang on the vernal pool, no vernal pool issue, sir?
Yes, I actually have, since we have no access to the place, probably Dan, and if you can. Curry Fine is looking on the map. The watershed seems like it's incomplete. The contours was like only partial. And second is, it mentioned the water is kind of discharging off to the south. So where that water flows, flowing to the farm or where that water eventually go, the concern is the hydrolic connections for this area, obviously, at least it's flooded. If you're growing season, probably to, to a two weeks possible from what I, I learned. And if this is wetland hydrology present at the site and it is a hydral, a hydral connection to further downstream wetlands. So those are the questions. We, I don't have any information, so therefore that's just put as a question at this point.
Right, right. Got, I got it. And, and we will return and, and want to hear from you and others on the issue of groundwater protection and what happens to the sefluent and where does it go? But I, I think the issue on the table right now is, is this a vernal pool or not? And the applicant has made their case that it's not. And Mr. Haverdy has, has made a case that, and even if it is, it's, it's, it's our, the applicant's problem to deal with. I can sort of summarize things briefly. Other parties to be heard on the issue of whether or not that wet area is or is not a vernal pool?
I, I mean, I, I just, I, I actually would like either Dan or, or Michael to speak up. I think that we didn't just do this exercise to say whether there was or wasn't a vernal pool. We did this exercise to show that there are no jurisdictional wetlands. So in, in answer to the issue raised by Mr. Lesser, but I, I may be speaking incorrectly. So I just want to see if either Dan or Michael will speak to that issue. But I, I may be speaking, uh, in, in incorrectly. So I just wanted to see if either Dan or Michael will speak to that issue.
Uh, it's, you know, it's different under the state and, and local regulations, how they define wetlands, freshwater wetlands. And I, you know, the question is, is this isolated? Um, I think there was a comment of whether this connected to the wet, to a wetland on Hunting Lane. And I'll just call up this, this contour map again. And I think there was a suggestion that maybe there was a flow this direction connecting down to a. A, a wetland in the front of the house over in this area. And so the, the contours, and Michael can chime in too. Um, but there's a watershed break by topography right here. So this kind of demonstrates this three ten contour. It, that the water could not, there, there couldn't be any flow down in that direction. So anything over here would, would be directed into this basin. So from that perspective, we don't see that this could be a bordering vegetated wetland connected to a, a wetland to the north.
So then my question actually more to the south, uh, where the stone warriors. Uh, so if we're just looking at it, the depression can be mounted to, uh, to, uh. Three hundred and ten. So the volume calculation was limited to three hundred and seven point, if I can see it. Point eight or point something. So, so that assuming the water will flow out of the. Uh, stone wall further to the south and that, but there's no detailed contours to show where that water will continue. If that water doesn't overflow means that con, uh, depression area would be, uh, much bigger. Rather than the discharging point, may, maybe I understood the presentation here, so.
Hey, Michael Lesser, you raised your hand very briefly, sir.
Yeah, no, I, I, I see the report by Dan. And what they're saying is being silent on whether this is a jurisdictional wetland area or could be one. Based, at this point, there's nothing explicitly written in that statement. They might say something now, but it also was not something that we did, has been reviewed. Or given the chance to review in any case. But there is the issue of the connectivity to the south. Um, that has not been fully looked at and is beyond this. So, but that's something that is, uh, right, as I said before, it'll have to be dealt with at the NOI process. And we're deciding whether there's jurisdictional areas there and, uh, what extent you factor that in into a. ZBA process is unclear to me whether you could say there's uncertainty about that the field has, that this septic air. Soil absorption system is in a possible wetlands jurisdiction. I'm a little bit at a loss of how you might factor that into, uh, an overall picture of problems with the project.
Michael, let me ask you a question which may seem stupid. Is it possible that under your regulations, it is a jurisdictional wetness, wetland for local purposes? But not a jurisdictional wetland for state purposes? Do your regs differ?
Yeah, they differ a little on the isolated, um, and right, so the calculation is there, but we haven't had a chance to review that. Um, because it does hold less water. And then the, the isolated wetland definition, as they pointed out, is, uh, is slightly smaller volume. Or two thirds the volume. Um, and, uh, so yes, there is a question there that, that it could be there. And then it might also be a jurisdiction under the state too, but I don't know how to.
Well, it, it, it doesn't matter because if it's under the state, uh, conscom will get a bite at the apple there.
Right. I, I can't tell whether it's going to fall in that little crack where it's just under the local and not under the, uh, other. And I don't know what to say about that, given that we haven't had any chance to do that work.
So Mr. Haverty, are you asking us to waive the local definition of an isolated land? Uh, subject to fu- flooding to the extent it differs from the state? Because that's, I think where the legal issue is going to turn here.
And I will let Dan confirm this, but my understanding is that we do not fall within either the state or the local definition. So we are not asking for any.
But the, but the wording of the waivers that you submitted earlier. Uh, basically you asked for complete waiving of everything except for stumps and fill. If you would like to amend your waivers so that you're not asking for a waiver.
Michael, Mi- Michael, he said something different, which is he was asking Mr. Wells. If the local, uh, standard for isolated land subject to flooding is, is satisfied. As in, this is not an isolated land subject to flooding under the local rules, in which case he doesn't need a waiver.
All right. So it's, it's not peer reviewed, basically, that this.
No, it's not that it's peer reviewed. It's that it doesn't need a waiver.
Right, but we could, I guess I'm trying to understand if we did our own calculations and the, from somebody else and found that yes, it does fall within it. Then, uh.
Okay, Michael, I, I, I do want to hear Mr. Wells's answer.
Uh, yeah, my, my conclusion was that we do not meet either the state or local definition of ILSF. I said land subject to flooding. So we would, we are not requesting a waiver from that regulation.
But that's not what the waivers say.
Okay, but, 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 but now, but now, Michael, your point is well taken, which is. To the extent that we're going on Mr. Wells's submission by the applicant, that under the local rules. It's not an isolated land subject to flooding. That has not been peer reviewed and won't be. And we'll, and we'll have to weigh that in whether or not decide whether, whether or not to grant that waiver.
Okay, I think if somebody else has raised their hand from the commission.
Right. Ms. Bedner. Yeah, you're muted, Jean. Jean, you're still muted.
Yeah. You're muted.
Yeah, start over, please.
Uh, Jean Bednar, Bogastow Brook Road, Conservation Commission. I'm apologizing for coming late to the game, but I've been listening for the last half hour. And I need to ask, has the peer review, um, commented on whether or not. This wet area meets the state standard for an isolated land subject to flooding? Or are we just going based on the, the applicant's consultant?
Um, Mr. Houston, correct me, but I think the answer to that is squarely no. Uh, because they did not make any wetlands filing with us and are choosing to do it after they're completed in our process, which they are entitled to do.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it was part of our scope of services, uh, to peer review wetland issues. But, uh, and we have the services of Dr. John Rockwood of Echo Tech lined up to do that work. But the applicant denied Dr. Rockwood access to the site. So we have not been able to peer review anything.
So we don't, we don't have.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute.
Uh, wait, stop, stop.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not aware of any request of.
Lynn, Lynn, Lynn.
Yep.
Please let Ms. Bender finish. Thank you, go ahead.
Apologize again for coming late to the process. But, uh, so it sounds like there was no second opinion on whether this was an isolated land subject to flooding.
Absolutely not. There was not.
Okay.
Lynn, go ahead.
This has to be addressed later on in the notice of intent process.
Yes, under the state rules, but, but, but if they're asking us for a waiver, that i- it's a live issue with us.
If who is asking you for a waiver?
If the applicant is asking the ZBA to say, standing in the shoes of the conscom. That we waive the application for local rules as to what defines an isolated land subject to flooding. We're going to have to do that with no information.
And.
Given us.
They have made that request, correct?
It sounds like they have.
What, but they just said they have not, but they, I'm asking them whether they will change their, they're saying they don't need it. And whether they will change their list to, to, to go with that. And therefore, whether therefore it gives you the right to condition that if it turns out to be an isolated wetland underneath the, uh, local bylaw. Then, um, then I guess we have a right to come up with some condition about it.
Yeah, w- w- again, uh, uh, Michael, I, I don't think you understand. The process is ending tonight.
I know, but the crafting, if this issue has been brought up now, my understanding was that we can craft the wording of the conditions during your open process. If, if this.
Possibly, although I, I think, I think i- it's, it's entirely possible that what we'd have to say on this is, to the extent you need a waiver, it's denied. Because you haven't given us any chance to peer review it.
And, and Mr. Chairman.
And if they don't need it, that won't, that won't hurt them.
Right, I can go one further than that and say that we will verbally withdraw any waiver claim with regards to the local bylaw. Definition of isolated land subject to flooding.
Right, that, that, that actually makes it a lot easier. Because you can, because then when you go to the.
Of the wetland bylaw.
Okay, great, great solution. Thank you, Paul. That'll let conscom bring it up under their local regs when you go to them. Ms. Bedder.
Just, I just want to put it out there that, um, under normal circumstances, meaning when. The Conservation Commission reviews applications with, uh, the local bylaw applying. If the question comes up about an isolated wetland or a vernal pool. And it's out, out of season, meaning out of when the isolated wetland or the vernal pool can contain water. Uh, it's, uh, very common for com- conservation commissions to request that determinations be. Postponed until the following spring. So that's, that's just something that happens, uh, generally. And I just wanted to throw that out there.
Right, but, but you'll still have those rights.
Yeah, I'm, I'm basically just throwing that out for the applicants.
Right, okay.
I know.
You've been, no, Michael, wait. Lynn, you've been waiting. Lynn Sweet.
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm all set. I think, you know, Paul, Paul has made, made the point that we, we've done the research. We presented it. We're not, we're not concerned about it. And, um, he, you know, has given you language to give you the assurances that you need. Um, so I'm not sure, you know, and, and at this point in time, I think there, you know, there was a lawsuit that basically said. You can apply to the concom when you're in the middle of a, um, a forty B hearing. So that's, you know, a- all of those rules apply at this point.
Kate is argumentative. I think your counsel has advised you that it's not in your interest to do so, and, and we all respect his reasons for doing that. It's not like people would be thrown in jail for filing. Okay, Mr. Lesser.
I'm sorry to, hopefully you don't view this as belabriant. You basically, I'm, I, I thought I'm getting sort of two different messages about when we do the NOI process. Later on before the Conservation Commission, that it's under the state Wetlands Protection Act. I think I just heard you say that if they don't waive something now, that we could then take it into effect when we do that. But I thought I was lost time.
We cannot. Mr. Haverty, let me try to restate it on your behalf. You can tell me if I get it right.
So, so that is not correct. So appeals is the only entity that has jurisdiction over the local wetland bylaw. When we go for the notice of intent, the Conservation Commission will have jurisdiction to review the isolated land subject to flooding. To determine whether it's jurisdictional under the state act. And as part of that process, it can certainly point out whatever calculations were conducted may leave it. As something that is subject under the local bylaw as well, which would then put us in a position of having to come back to the board. And request a modification of the comprehensive permit to get the waiver necessary. Because without that waiver, we don't have the authorization to do any work in that.
Right.
But the only, the only entity that has, that has the authority to issue any approvals under the local wetlands bylaw is the board appeals. Under a comprehensive permit.
Right. So let me, let me try to translate that if I can, Paul.
Sorry.
No, 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 no. You just, you're, I, I followed you perfectly. You're absolutely technically correct, but, but not everybody, uh, on the calls is, is, is a lawyer or a forty B lawyer. So trying to translate. Michael and Jean, to the extent that you feel when this comes before you. That this is an isolated land subject to flooding under the local regulations, but not under the state regulations. You will have the ability to, uh, raise your hand and, and stop the process and say, you know, we're not, we're not granting you this permit. Because it's an isolated land subject to, subject to flooding. Then Paul will come running back to this board and ask us to modify our decision to give him the waiver, because technically he can't get it from you. Paul, how was that?
Which point you would then be able to do a peer review and make it.
Right, right.
Um.
So, so the elegance of, of Paul's solution is, we don't have to solve the peer review issue on isolated land subject to flooding tonight.
Just to clarify, um, the Conservation Commission would not take the position. That because we believe or has been proven to be an isolated land subject to flooding, we would not grant a permit. That is not the way we operate. We, we would, recognizing an isolated land subject to flooding. We would ask that the project be conditioned to protect the interests of that resource area. It's, you know, we, we never, rarely, most conservation commissions throughout the state rarely come to the position of. This has to be denied, period.
Right.
It's a matter of, it's a matter of conditioning.
Right, but, but, but the applicant here is putting almost all their affluent in exact, in that exact spot. So if it turns out it's an isolated land subject to flooding under your regulations, it, it will be a hard burn issue for them.
There could be a lot of conditions.
Right, right. That's, okay. It, it, I, I still think Mr. Haverty has done a, a good job of proposing something that, that diffuses the issue for tonight. And I mean that in diffusing as in diffusing a bomb as, as opposed to diffusing water over, over a surface.
Makes sense, understood.
Okay, all right, um. Lynn, I think you had the, was that the last of your four issues?
Um, the other issue, and it's certainly up to you if you want to discuss it. Um, the abutters had attached an alternative plan. We met with them. Um, we just didn't know whether or not it was a plan that the board wanted to, um, consider. Um, we generally, you know, we put a letter into you generally stating that, um, in reality, um, from an engineering perspective. It's a plan that we think we could work with. We would need to move a few things, things around. But we think that there is an opportunity to, um, move, um, the project farther away. Um, from, from the neighbors, um, and address some of those, those concerns. Um, and, you know, either if you want to discuss it tonight, great. If you want to, again, make it a condition that we spend some more time on that plan. We're, we're happy to do that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, abutters, I, I know that you all had some, uh, some pretty strongly held views on that plan. Who wants to go first? Paul, John?
This is John Garrison. Sorry, I don't know if Paul wants to speak up, but I certainly will. We did have a meeting with, with Lynn and, uh, Mr. Malinowski. Uh, I think just about a week ago. Uh, as you know, we had submitted a very schematic plan, which is something that we came up with on our own. Just showing where houses could be located. Uh, we discussed a lot of possibilities in that meeting and we appreciate them. The, the, the give and take that we had. I, I would say nothing was concluded from that meeting other than that there were definitely possibilities. Certainly for relocating the houses away from the abutters, uh, possibilities for screening. We specifically discussed moving the wastewater treatment plant further away from my property, which pleased me. Uh, but again, nothing, uh, concrete was, was proposed. And, uh, when we left the meeting, uh, Ms. Sweet and Mr. Malinowski said they were going to go discuss it with the applicant. So that's, that's, as far as I know, that's where we are.
All right. And Paul, what's your, what, 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 what's your recollection of the conversation?
Yeah, I agree with John in terms of what he said. We also talked about some other issues that, um, we're, we're sort of waiting to hear back. There was the issue about the large leaching field for the eighty-seven units. Uh, up there where that, uh, pool was discussed earlier. Um, you know, having, you know, sewage for eighty-seven, uh, units go up about a, uh, from North Main Street. About a half a mile, a punting lane to that, uh, place near the top of Paul Hill. Which as a lot of people know, it's one of the highest hills, if not the highest hill in, in Sherburne. And there was a, a statement that we, we mentioned to Lynn and Michael. That the applicant said that it could be possible to put a leaching field down in forty-one North Main Street. If it was necessary. So one of our requests was to either move the leaching field down to the forty-one North Main Street area. Or split it up, um, and not have the leaching field on top of, uh, Paul Hill, you know, for all the units. Uh, so that was one thing that we threw out. So that was one thing that we threw out. And we also mentioned that, and I'm reading, I'm referring to my May 24th letter to the ZBA, that wanted the applicant to consider if development, you know, moved forward, if there was contamination of the wells or problems with well quality or well quantity in the area, that there would be some mechanism in, you know, to hook up the wells to the wells for the development. And that was another issue that Lynn said they would think about it.
The issue is that we, we put in our letter to the board was that we did agree to the screening for our provides around the properties with whatever plan is done. That's something that is commonly done. It's done in a zigzag mechanism to screen the Abutters, so that, you know, I think is something that we can agree on and that is a given. The, I think that the meeting ended not with us saying we were going to explore other possibilities, but with the Abutters saying to us the only thing that they would agree to, what is what was allowed as of right, therefore we did not explore any other matters with regard to moving the leaching field and so on and so forth, because it did not seem like we were anywhere close on coming to agreement on on a unit count. And that is what we put in our letter. As I've stated in our letter and at the beginning of this conversation, we are happy to work with the plan that was put forth with the 27 units and move things around, but we're certainly not in a position to reduce density and move a leaching field and so on and so forth. That would make the project uneconomical.
Well, the way I remember how we ended is was that the, one of the things that we discussed was, you know, to reduce the number of units, or at least we raised that, and I thought that you had mentioned at the end of the meeting that, well, if we do the things that you asked, including reducing the number of units, would you drop your opposition to the project? And of course, you know, we were talking about these alternatives, but only as an alternative to our main, you know, position that the project is not appropriate for the site. So obviously, we couldn't say, okay, if you move this here, move this there, we'll drop our opposition. So, and that was a preliminary discussion, Rick, so you know, it was sort of late in the game, and it was only done because we wrote a letter to the ZBA saying that they were refusing to meet with us to discuss our concerns.
Okay, so Lynn, Paul, and John, can I try to play back what I think I'm hearing here, and you can tell me if my ears are working properly? It sounds like there wasn't a complete agreement on how to redo the project. It sounds like, Lynn, you said in one letter, and you'll have to refresh my recollection on which one it was, you've sent me a lot of letters. That's not a complaint, it's just a fact that I'm trying to sort through them, that you'd agreed to certain screening. But I think I just also heard you say, no, we haven't agreed to reduce density, no, we haven't agreed to move the leaching field. Have you agreed to move the wastewater treatment plant building?
So I just, I do want to clarify this, because I think that, and maybe we're going to have to agree to disagree on what happened at the meeting. Our discussion at the meeting was looking at a new 27-unit layout with the existing home. The discussion was that on the plan submitted by the Abutters, we could move the location of where on that alternative plan they put the wastewater treatment plant, we would need to move, but the location of where we would need to move that to was something that the parties agreed was a good location, because it was indeed farther away from the Abutters. The, so this is on the alternative plan, not the one that's before the board right now. The discussion involved, they had put a cul-de-sac down, and they said they even wanted the cul-de-sac farther away. And then the discussion was, well, if we do those things, we might lose one or two units, but we need to go and shuffle things around. And our takeaway from the meeting was losing one or two units was not of any interest whatsoever to the Abutters, therefore we did not do any more work. So there was a willingness on our part to work on the alternative plan. And that alternative plan had the houses farther away from the Abutters, it had the septic treatment plant farther away from the Abutters, it had the cul-de-sac farther away from the Abutters, and the potential loss of a couple of units. That's the plan that we were willing to have discussions on. Again, the Abutters were very clear that they would not agree to anything other than that was allowed as of right, therefore we could not proceed any further.
Okay, but I may not be articulating my question well. So let me try it again. I'm not throwing rocks at either side for trying hard or not trying hard enough or whatever to reach agreement. I'm just trying to find out whether at the end of the day you did agree or not. And that really, I don't want to be arguing about who said what to when or who left what meeting with what feeling. It sounds like the only thing that you, that everybody's agreed on is some screening?
We agreed to screening, and we, and if you want to impose the condition that we work with the plan that they set forth, we can work with in the plan they set forth. We're not obviously able to engineer and finalize it today, but we can work with that layout and shuffle things around, but there's, you know, there's things that need to move around. That's what we, those are the items we agreed to at the meeting.
And just so I'm hearing you correctly, because I think I am, but I just want to get it written down. When you say you'll work with that plan, that doesn't mean you're going to reduce the density, and it doesn't mean you're going to move the leaching field.
No, there's not an ability to move the entire leaching field, that that is a whole other engineering study as to whether there are alternative locations with regard to reducing density. That is absolutely up for discussion. If we can't fit all the buildings on the plan, losing one or two units may be something that the applicant can live with. The applicant cannot live with going back to whatever the neighbors feel is acceptable as of right, which is whatever, two or four units or something like that.
But, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you, I just want to make sure, and Paul, keep me honest. You're not committing tonight to any level of density. You leave the door open to yourself to reduce, to self-reduce, and you can always do that.
Yeah, we are leaving the door open that if the board feels their alternative plan is something that is a better alternative for everybody, we can work with that going forward. That's really what we're committing to. We, obviously, again, the location of the septic treatment on that is problematic because of the wetlands, so there will need to be some shuffling. But we want to show that indeed, we looked at the plan, we did some engineering, we had a discussion, and, you know, we took it very seriously, and we're happy to work with, you know, work within that. You know, the other matter that was brought up by the neighbors was, was if they had issues with their wells, would there be some sort of commitment to them to share the well system? And I understand their concern, I understand their requests. In fact, we actually have David Formato here from Onsite Engineering with us tonight, standing by to address the question, you know, that came up around the wells, around the corner, which I think is part of the whole discussion. I just don't think that because that particular aspect is reviewed down the line, and it's reviewed by DEP, that the applicant can make any commitments around that at this time, and and part of it is, you know, they're just like, well, you should include everybody on Hunting Lane and then everybody on North Main Street. So it was, it was, it was, it was, it was so wide open that there was no ability for us to to do anything with it at this point in time, because again, it's something that's going to be engineered, you know, down the road. But if you want to move to the issue of wells and wastewater, which I know is on everyone's mind, David is standing by.
Right, okay. All right, and so, but now we've worked through your four items, it actually turned into five items, because another one came up late, issues list, correct?
Yes, and again, like I said, David, I think had wanted to respond to the questions that came up from the neighbors about the well site on North Main Street and just talk, you know, just try and respond to that comment if you would allow him to.
All right, that is the next place I'd like to go, if my fellow board members will allow us, which is, I think we ought to just discuss together the issue of well capacity and groundwater contamination, and while they are not the same, a lot of the subject matter experts spoke to both. And so I think particularly with respect to CLWE and the Board of Health, and quite possibly the Planning Board and some of the neighbors and Ms. Stiller and Ms. Sagar, we can't really, I don't think we can really parse those issues fully, so I'd like to say that the next issue we take up is the combined issue of groundwater contamination in wells. Is that acceptable to the fellow members?
Yes.
Yeah, great. And I think I'd like to hear, and now, this is why I wanted to make that list of people who wanted to be heard from, so I can tick through it. Andrea Stiller, you are first on my list, so you wanted to be heard. You sent in a letter. Speak up, please.
I am here. Andrea Stiller, 205 Woodlands Street. I'm an LSP, I've worked in the GIO Environmental Industries for 35 years, and I am on the Groundwater Protection Committee, but I am here as Citizen X. So three, three items, and they are all under your heading of water quantity and quality. So drinking water supply, the peer reviewer, he has serious concerns about one of the installed wells for the project. We have had water shortages in the downtown area in Hunting Lane, and I apologize if I'm repeating things, I am a little new to the game as well, but I'm going to take my few minutes here. So, yes, wells have had to be re-drilled and, you know, a significant number. And we have experienced last year a critical drought. So there are five stages of drought. Critical is the fourth out of five. The next one is emergency drought, and, you know, given the trend, we will, you know, this isn't going to go away, this is going to reoccur, it happens in Dover, it's happening in the Charles River Basin, it's happening all around us. It's, you know, the water quantity issue is a concern. Especially with 87 new households going in that also need water. Geology. This property is a bedrock-controlled property, there are numerous visible outcrops. It's mapped as such, it has a thin layer of glacial till over bedrock. The glacial till is a low permeability soil. With regard to all the underground utilities that are going to go from Main Street up to the sewage treatment plant to the water, there is likely going to, I know that the applicant plans to do some horizontal drilling, and I'll talk to that in a minute, but in all likelihood for the foundations, you're going to hit bedrock and you're going to need to blast. Blasting's disruptive to nearby Abutters in and of itself, and perchlorates that are often used in the blasting products are very water soluble, have a very low drinking water threshold, and there have been many sites, drinking water supplies in Massachusetts, private and public water supplies, that have been impacted by perchlorates. And then you need to find an alternate water supply. So, and horizontal drilling, that creates, you know, tunnels, holes, pathways for groundwater to flow away downhill. So it, you know, can have the effect of drying up a wetland or just changing the hydrology instead of groundwater infiltrating. Where it falls from rain and snow melt, it will be diverted away, so the replenishment of the groundwater that we so need, it doesn't happen. And another geology issue, again, shallow bedrock, low permeability soils with regard to the leach field. The water table, I'm sure it fluctuates, it's shallow bedrock, and seeing, you know, indications of groundwater at two feet within the proposed leach field area is not surprising. And so, so serious concerns about managing waste from all 87 new households from both developments and their the, and the concern of water quality. There will be substantial mounding that will likely result, given the geology, and and this, the, you know, without having anywhere to go, the groundwater, the infiltrated sewage water could flow along preferential pathways, the bedrock-soil interface into the fractures and get into the Abutters' wells. And you could get breakout across the land surface. I mean, sometimes, you know, people have had their, have had to bleach, pour bleach in their wells, that's because E. coli from geese get down, you know, it can get down from the ground surface down into the well. So that's another pathway that could impact the well. So, I mean, point being, it's critical that the project does not degrade in any way the drinking water quality of the area of the Abutters beyond the project itself. And that's about it.
Thank you very much for those comments. Okay. Ms. Sagar? Did I get your name correctly?
You mean Sagar.
Sagar, sorry.
I actually have my husband as well, Paul, with me, and he's going to, you know, share the facts of our, of our sort of journey over the last, you know, few months, and he's going to start with that.
Yeah, so just to start with a little bit of background, so this is Colin Joe Sager from 51 North Main Street. We moved to Sherburne in June of 2017. Before we purchased the house in April of 2017, we had a well test done. At the time, the well was delivering seven gallons a minute over a three-hour period. At that point, it was dropping down to about five gallons a minute. Now, we did have a problem with the well pump in October of 2017, so we did replace it, and that fixed the problem we had. But then, starting in 2019, we started to notice a drop in water pressure, and we would occasionally have the well run dry, we'd run out of water. Now, between 2019 and pretty much the summer of 2020, that situation got a lot worse, to the point that in the summer of 2020, we were running out of water every day. We could literally take a five-minute shower, no longer than a five-minute shower before the well would run dry, and then we would have to wait probably three, four hours before we had enough water to take another five-minute shower. Now, just as an observation, I will point out that that time period correlates with the development at 59 North Main. So there are 12 dwellings going up there, and over that time period, six of those dwellings became active, people moved into them, so we had six more houses consuming the water in the area as well. Now, in November of 2020, we then had to, or sorry, in August 2020, we did another well test, and the well was actually only delivering 0.1 gallon a minute of refill. of refill rate. So in November, we ended up having to put a new well in. The well had to be drilled to eight hundred feet. And even at eight hundred feet, when they drilled it, we were only just getting one gallon a minute. We had it fracked, and that gave us just short of four gallons a minute. So it's not a great refill rate. The positive or benefit we have, if you like, is the fact that we've got an eight-hundred-foot well, which gives us roughly twelve-hundred gallons of water to feed off. But I'll say our concern is, as we move forward, if the water is dropping, that volume of water in the well is going to drop, and we're not going to have the quantity of water we need. And other people in the area are going to have, not going to have the quantity of water that they need. The other point is, you know, there are a lot of houses on North Main Street over the last few years that have had wells drilled. They've all been drilling to eight hundred-plus feet to get water. To my knowledge, and I'm not, I'm not a well driller by any way, shape, or form, but to my knowledge, once you go beyond eight hundred feet, the cost goes up exponentially to drill a well. And so it could be before long that we've got residents of the town that are having to drill wells of a thousand twelve-hundred feet to actually get water. And it just seems a little crazy to me to have this size of dwellings going in in an area that is already susceptible to lack of water.
And I just, you know, like to add that, you know, the human aspect, you know, and the stress that, you know, my family and I endured during that period of August to December last year. You know, something that we never want to experience again. You know, getting up each day, not knowing if we can shower, flush toilets, you know, even run laundry. You know, it was a depressing period for us. And, you know, having to go to the grocery store constantly to purchase gallons and gallons of water. I mean, you know, I ask all of you, imagine yourself in that situation. Nobody wants to be in that situation. And that was over three, you know, three months. And we moved in four years ago, and we had an ample supply of water and, you know, committed to investing, you know, in our energy, time, and money into this, you know, historic home, helping to continue, you know, to preserve Sherborne's long and proud history. But quite honestly, you know, the depleting natural water resource in the area concerns us greatly. And, you know, regardless of any development now or in the future, as is considering, you know, if the town is invested in its existing residential community, as we believed it was four years ago when we selected Sherborne to be our home.
All right. Thank you for that sobering report. Mr. Deblar, you've been waiting patiently. You're on the list. You're still muted, sir. There we go. Go ahead. You're good.
Genie, could you possibly get the second page of my letter up with a map of downtown? Anyway, I've been in the water concern business in Sherborne for fifteen or twenty years. The town is very concerned about downtown Sherborne where geology and past misunderstanding of water transport and quality has allowed downtown to be too densely developed. If you look at the town center, there are twelve public water supplies regulated by the state. None of those would be permitted today if you wanted to start out. And in the corner of the town where they want to put in a well, there's already a public water supply whose Zone One regulated zone overlaps their property. Any well they are putting in is going to overlap a railroad, a road, and another Zone One, which technically is not allowed by the DEP. And all this is a way to say that the town water downtown in particular is highly stressed. There are too many wells there. There are too many septic systems. The risk of something going seriously south is really bad. The town has invested quite a bit of money in studying what to do about it. We have actually managed to put in a test well off the end of Morse Road about a mile from downtown that is in Overburn, which is really rare in this town, where you can control where the water comes from because it's surface water that goes into essentially gravel pits. There's appears to be enough capacity in this test well to serve downtown, but not a lot of growth. If you look at what is proposed here, there's a very huge increase in the demands for water in that area. The letter I wrote is mainly aimed at the DEP to be very careful when they evaluate this project. Their regulations about pumping of test wells and looking at the impact on surrounding wells is legally required. They don't always do that, but I believe if they do that, they will find that this system is not going to survive. Well, here's the map.
Yep, Genie beat me to it.
Okay. The big black building on the right there is center is Pine Hill School. And to the left, you can see where I've written in forty-B, 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 and the three lots that are part of the proposed project. And you see the red circles. Those are Zone Ones of public water supplies that in theory have to be on the owner's property. They cannot have a building on them. They cannot have a road on them. They certainly can't have a railroad on them. They can't have any septic systems on it. And if you look through these things, you'll see that every public water supply down there violates all of those rules. And the public water supply they want to install will also violate these rules. So as I say, this is really a letter intended for the DEP to say, be very careful, follow the rules. And my personal opinion is that that well is going to fail. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Genie, you win the Faster with the Computer Award. Again. All right. Clear water and engineering. I bet you had something to say on well capacity and and on groundwater contamination. Here's your chance, sir.
Good evening. I tried to hopefully make it short because in my April and the main letter, I expressed my data and analysis. And just as many already testifying that the project scale in a relative sense is just overwhelming compared with the existing conditions and the water shortage, especially I talked to Paul and Joe Sagar in the ready lensy, just heard every word they said. It's not just the empathy they experienced. I think their case shed a really good light on the actual world, the real world of the impact of of this area as well as the actual condition of aquifer. So we know all the wells is in this type of bedrock, just as the town peer review hydrogeologist pointed out. It's not a high production or high storage, high yield aquifer. So that's just facts. Nobody can change that. So as that condition dominated or dictate our situation here, we all share some kind of responsibility to how to preserve the water here. And what I'm trying to point out is the detailed story, what happened, it's given us a good insight, how should we test the well? It's not just based on some cookbooks, either DEP or even EPA. They probably have a much broader application and under different circumstance. But over here, if we just throw everything out in the ground and just say we are going to follow, a DEP is very strict, and to what level, we know it's more stringent or more conservative than what we all have been know here. So that's the one I'm concerned. Because as aquifer, we all know it dry, because I want to make it simple. And the aquifer, you have three aspects to think about it. One is how quick the water can deliver to our well, which is related to the porosity in the aquifer. So if you have a sand, so the sand is very permanent, the water can get in quick. But in the bedrock, especially in granite and the volcanic bedrock, it's almost, when I was in school, studied hydrogeology, there's one quarter called oxymoron, when you call granite aquifer, because granite just doesn't really give me a good aquifer. So therefore, when we're trying to tell people, oh, we have a granite aquifer, so that's oxymoron. So that just tells us we have a very limited storage to start with in the area and which should be evaluated. So really, how much water is stored underground in that general area? To what level study we should be able to tell and comfortable for the existing use and the predicted use? Would that be able to sustain that long term? If we don't know that, we just do a test in five hours, five days, but how about five months later it dried up? So how can we know that's a stringent? So the Sagar's experience clearly tells us that story. So it doesn't mean all the wells at the fifty-nine was not tested properly according to DEP, according to even town's file law. But how come, I'm not trying to link in that to a hundred percent, but it's just by common sense, you know, the sun, all the water is coming from the same aquifer. So the second is aquifer storage is like trying to express it. So, yeah, you can go much deeper. Sometimes if you go much deeper, the porosity is so limited in the bedrock, you just don't generate that much water. So you're going to dry up again. And thirdly, it's about the recharge. So because the water doesn't come in out of the rock, unless you're Moses, you can hit the rock, you can get the water out. So otherwise, the water comes from the rain. And that rain comes down and recharge it to somewhere, if you don't have, if you don't find that out, and you cannot quantify the water recharging the wells we are using, the wells we are drilling and expecting to use. So it means you are just putting a black box and trying to expect, expecting that the water will somehow magically coming out. So scientific engineer principle tell us that's doomed to fail. Because if you don't plan, you don't understand. So it means you throw the dice and just say, oh, because we follow the protocol, the DEP, that's all they're asking for, right now we can have the water. And so when you're going to test in the water, if you're testing in the spring, you're testing the summer, they all can be different. So there's possibilities of a water shortage around the the total time spectrum as well as the high demanding. So it's quite complicated, and that's why I believe the state spelled it out. You should fully explore all the environmental safety situation. And as I can tell at this point, I understand the applicants is going to the state. And so therefore, they are conditionally to be fully explored. So that's put into a little bit concern, as I said, while we have the practical concerns here and the actual case happening, but we can ignore it at this moment. But so I hope the board have the wisdom, has wisdom, so we're trained, skilled people, as I understand and I can read. So we get to coming up something, say, we feel comfortable, we have a roadmap. How can we know that things is fully explored? And we can protect the people, not just the people right now in town in that area, but also for this eighty-seven home in the future. They will also subject to the same shortage of the water and need to be dealt with. If it's not properly studied and it's not cookie cutter, we need to have a comprehensive study and call it water budget overall. Because you, so if you don't do an overall water budget, just temporarily mobilize the water and you fulfill your technical satisfaction, but you don't have the sustainable water storage in the aquifer for you to use. That's not, to me, it's not quite fully explored and especially for Sherborne's situation. So I think that's the basic, I say, as far as I know, the wetlands is the same situation because we can say, we can put it off until you are doing that. If that wetlands is there, how can, it's for the applicant's own protection. They have to totally prevent their design for septic leach field or anywhere. If that turned into some kind of hydraulic connection, it turned into B V W. So you cannot put over there. So if you cannot put there, you spend all this money. It's not responsible even just for the applicant. Because if we do something, assuming we can just sweep under the rock at this moment, and later we can revisit it, so we taking the bad or taking a risk on it. So that's, I feel really as a professional, I would be myself uncomfortable. So asking the board to say not to look in at the issue fully at this point because we want to deal with that later. So that's just, I won't do it. If I do the project design, I will tell my clients, say, okay, this is the issue. We have to face it until we have a certainty. Otherwise, if we go down that road. So I think I will be reliable as a professional as well as liability perspective. So I think that's all I had to say. And in summary, it's just that we have, we have like a real problem to face in our common challenge and how to share. Even if we have plenty of water, doesn't matter, but we all kind of already know the real reality told us so. And we trying to cover our eyes is not the right approach. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Two very important procedural points that I want everyone to pay very close attention to. The chat room. It's not part of our record. It's not part of the process. It's an interesting and amusing sidelight. But if you have something to say, don't say it in the chat room. If you're trying to raise your hand and you can't possibly figure out how to raise your hand and zoom, contact Genie. But the chat room is not a good way to be noticed because there's an awful lot of cross-talk and off-topic issues going on in there. So so raising your hands the way to be noticed. Second, and this is a very important one, to the applicant team. As we're trying to weigh evidence on whether there's water and how much water there is, I think I've heard two things from the applicant team. One is, well, here are the pumping records from last October. And Michael Malinowski, I think one of your colleagues walked us through that. And that's evidence that we accept that it's on the table. But the other thing we keep hearing from the applicant team is, don't you see how careful the state rules are? And therefore, you should rely on those. And while Paul Haberty was amused, that's why this rabbit and this hatter there, saying trust the state, puts the rabbit in the hat. The whole point of our forty-B process is to determine whether we should be trusting the state regulations on this or not. And so therefore, personally, as one board member saying the state regulations are out there and the state is careful, that's good. I'm glad my state is careful. But our job is to determine whether they are careful enough for Sherborne under these circumstances, given that we have to balance a very important need for regional housing against a compelling need for having clean water. And those two may be able to coexist or not. So I'll come down off my soapbox now and tell, and call on Daryl Beardsley, who's been waiting for turn.
Okay, I just wanted to, hi, Daryl Beardsley, Chair of the Board of Health. We sent in additional comments just related to what you said, the town taking a more proactive stewardship role for its The town taking a more proactive stewardship role for its water resources because they really are critical to the well being of the people in town in addition to preserving um financial investments and people have already. So to that end, we are recommending that a condition of the comprehensive permit be that extensive pump testing be performed for both wells simultaneously for a duration of a month with monitoring of, I'm going to throw out a number, but roughly to say twenty five wells in the vicinity with the types of monitoring devices that uh record continuously information about what's happening to the levels in the wells that are being monitored and they can be left there and then the the readings can be taken and evaluated. They're not particularly expensive, especially for a project of this size and for the importance of water supply, both continued water supply for existing homeowners and for the future residents of the project. So we'd like the ZBA to consider that. And taking ownership of that, the DEP does a reasonable job, but they are not often dealing with a a town that is looking at such a dense development in an area that's already densely developed as well, and that's relying on onsite water. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Daryl. Um uh Mr. Saporano, if you can wait just a little bit, I had had a couple more people that were in the early signup that I wanted to to cover. Marian Neutra, are you wearing your 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 candidate hat, your citizen hat or your planning board hat? I bet it's planning board hat this time, right?
Yes, it's the planning board hat. Because uh the planning board has oversight over stormwater uh economy and stormwater flow. And incidentally, that's a that's something that cannot be waived uh in a forty B. And we've acknowledged before that our stormwater standards are basically, we're talking about DEP and EPA stormwater standards, not local standards here, that are not waivable. So the planning board has uh some serious concerns about the stormwater plan, the calculations upon which their plan is based. We feel that the calculations and the analysis is incomplete and not adequate to determine whether or not uh stormwater runoff from this site could pose a health and safety standard uh to the town or be more likely than not to pose such a a hazard, I didn't mean standard hazard. And we feel that uh as with the data that we have so far, we cannot rule out a health and safety hazard. And I'll just explain briefly why. Uh this site, we all know by now, it has a lot of bedrock, it has a thin soil overburden. And of course, this overburden of soil, which is not very deep, uh has, it's like a sponge, it has a limited capacity for water retention. So the state and federal standards say that any development cannot cause an increase in the amount of stormwater running off the site. There may already be stormwater running off the site and you you're not responsible for that, we acknowledge, but you cannot increase that stormwater. So the calculations that we've seen so far, at least as far as I've seen them, uh calculate a stormwa- a storm event and the peak flows that may go down the hill. And they have retention basins that are uh perhaps, we don't know yet because we don't have the data to know whether they are adequate to catch all the stormwater. Uh if there is overflow, it's supposed to go into the municipal stormwater system on Hunting Lane. The capacity of that system is not known. And uh the kind of elephant in the room in all these stormwater calculations is the fact that uh they're calculating what would happen after a storm under present conditions and after uh construction of the development. But they have not calculated into the equation, and I think the peer reviewers recognize this, that the uh the development is going to be adding over twenty one thousand gallons a day at the top of this thin sponge. So the storm, when a storm hits this area, the sponge is already going to be partly saturated, if not totally saturated. Now, we know that uh the DPW has let us know that there's constant flow of groundwater into the municipal system on Hunting Lane. And it's it's pretty much managing now, but it doesn't have a lot of excess capacity as far as uh as far as DPW can tell. And if that capacity were overrun, what happens is that the uh particulates and solids in the water are stirred up. They bind contaminants and those contaminants go into the outflow of the municipal system. So we feel there are uh there's not enough data to rule out a serious health and safety hazard on three counts. First of all, the overburden uh can't manage a storm if it's adding twenty one thousand gallons per day, even with no storm. And there may well be a mounting that affects the health and safety of a butter's because their septic systems would be overrun. And then there's the outflow contamination in the hunting lane and municipal system. Stirring up of that overburdening that system will cause uh solid turbulence and movement of contamination into the Indian Brook system. We know the Indian Brook system flows, let's see if my map is correct, flows north out of town right into the area where the town someday may want to put a town center well system. And from there, it flows on into the Charles River. So by law, this development should not be adding contaminants to either of those systems, and we don't have the data to rule that out. And finally, an overriding of the municipal stormwater uh system, even if there are manholes and the and the system is is expanded as is it may have to be, there's the possibility of a lot more water running onto Hunting Lane, which, as we know, in winter is a safety hazard with ice. So uh once again, I just hope the ZBA will uh pay close attention to the state standards and require all the calculations that protect us against those 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 hazards. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um a a question came in that was the answer, which was obvious to me, but I probably should have said so. The applicants were being very kind and listening very carefully to all this. We should not take their silence for agreement. And I'm assuming that at the end of all this commentary, they may very well have something to say. Um so we'll find out about that when we find out. Uh Mr. Saporano, I think you were next.
Thank you very much, and I'll take my hand down too. So I I I just like to say that, you know, first off, for me, it's 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 definitely hard not to be somewhat emotional about this pattern because uh I do live directly across from thirty one Hunting Lane. I'm at twenty eight and I have a young family. We moved to town eight years ago. And um while I would not have built a pool, we inherited a pool with the house. And so occasionally, we do have to kind of top off the pool. And um yeah, that'll take an hour or two of running the hose. And what used to be, um yeah, we could run the hose for two hours before it went dry is now down to about an hour. And I would say it's gotten worse since the development at fifty one North Main, which obviously the SAGA's have had even more of a negative impact from that. Um and you know, I think for for me and in my family, just the thought of some kind of development like this going in and having such a negative impact on the health and safety of our family, it just it just is mind boggling and very scary to us. And you know, I think that we're we're already seeing the water impact just from the development down the street. And um you know, I just want to go on the record and uh and state that. And I I do agree with the other statements that, you know, we our wells should be monitored. I think that to try to, you know, kind of bulldoze this through legally uh by the developer and his team, he's not even a developer, I'll say that again, it's hard for me to sorry, um is uh is very frustrating, especially when you're talking about the health and wellness of my family. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments. Um Michael Lesser, um you've had a lot to say. Is it something new?
On the water issue as opposed to the well.
Okay.
Um I would just like to, I think I wrote something late in the day that says that I won't repeat that I submitted to you um about, which I think you've also talked about, the idea that hopefully you can, despite whatever the state will do, the mass DEP will do, that the ZBA will take it on to do its own conditioning that would be a supplement to whatever the state might have. And I guess I just want to make sure that I would just want to agree with the other kind of comments made about people that uh that you come up with conditions, if you're not going to deny the project, that you come up with conditions about the scope of uh of what kind of pump testing there is and what what's monitored. I want to basically add that the wetlands get well monitored during as a as part of that conditioning with the same kind of detail um as we're talking about for neighboring wells and other areas so that we can have that data as well um as part of that and why the use also solicit from other players here, whether there are other uh aspects of the uh of the testing of the water and the septic that of sewage that there are other specifics that you can get from other experts in town.
Again, again, I'm I'm repeating myself, Michael, not after tonight.
If the issue has been brought up, is the wording of those things?
If it the suggest, the congest, the condition has to be suggested tonight with 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 specificity. So what we're not allowed to do is go out and say, well, we're going to go talk with the conscom about some some conditions now.
Well, then I'll make sure you add that you have on the list, which I think is already in our comments, that there's monitoring of the wetlands in the buffer zone during that. Would the other monitoring that would go on broadly and?
And and Michael, before the before we end tonight, I mean, that that is that is a window slamming shut. So you can't send them to me tomorrow.
That the order, the idea of monitoring wetlands, is that a sufficient statement?
No, no, you 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 mentioned that that that, no, that that's good, that's fine, that's concrete enough. But if you had, you know, put in thus and such type of well and thus and such type of uh monitor and and some specifics, if they're not on the table now, that we can't go solicit them later.
So in terms of the specifics of saying we need to have at least six sites monitored with some sort of continuous equipment during this, that you cannot take as wording issues during the crafting?
Correct, but if you're suggesting it tonight, it's on the table.
Okay, then I guess I have to, now, do I have to do that verbally or writing?
Uh so long as it's specific enough, I mean, these these are taped and and the uh the translation, the the close captioning is actually quite good. So.
Yes, I'm trying to think of what we had in our thing there, but I could.
Tell what 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 I moved on to somebody else and and when you've gotten it down to uh the shortest narrative you can, come back, how's that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I think Ms. Harrison is next.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Um I'll keep this brief. Um my name is Steph Harrison, I live on Nathan Hill Road in Sherburne. Um I'm on the groundwater protection committee and I'm speaking for myself tonight as a resident. Um I've been in the water industry for a water industry professional for about twenty years. Um and I just wanted to bring up something that I feel like everybody knows, but it hasn't been explicitly said tonight, and I want to make sure it stays in the forefront of everyone's mind. Um so Ms. Sweet pointed out that the development is slightly less dense than some of the other recent developments in town, but it's still a very large number of homes and that large number of homes scales to water supply. And the location of it is in the portion of town where groundwater problems are already known to occur. And what I want to remind everyone uh and bring to the forefront is that everything with respect to groundwater is essentially irreversible. If you overdraw an aqua, if we we as a town overdraw an aquifer, if we contaminate a groundwater supply, if we change hydrology and pathways, it's not something that can be fixed. It's very different from other changes that we face when we're thinking about developments like traffic. You can try something and if it doesn't work, you can put a signal in or you can change the routing of it. With groundwater, once you overdraw or contaminate or change it, it is essentially irreversible. And not only is it irreversible, but it's also invisible. And you don't know the impact has occurred until it reaches the wells, one of the one of the few places where you've put a straw in the aquifer and you're actually either using it or testing for it. So um that's all I wanted to say was to remind folks of those facts. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh John Garrison.
Yeah, uh thank you, Rick. John Garrison, thirty one Hunting Lane. Just following up on Marian's comments about stormwater. Uh one very specific point, which I think was brought up in uh Tom Houston's earliest reviews of the stormwater management, which was the piped connection to the catch basin system in Hunting Lane. Marian um mentioned that Sean Colleen has pointed out there's continuous uh stormwater runoff into that system. And there was a specific comment, and I know Tom's on the on the line, maybe he could, he could clarify this. In his initial peer review study, which said that connection into the catch basin system from thirty one Hunting Lane to the the catch basin system in the road will cause pollution. He said his his uh conclusion, it was not a, you know, maybe it was not a uh there's a risk. Uh it was a very strong statement, so I don't know if Tom maybe want to comment on that, but I know there's been some follow up to that, but to my knowledge, and I've tried to read these things closely, uh nobody has categorically uh refuted that statement.
Well, fir- first of all, Mr. Houston, do you want to speak for yourself?
Uh yes, Mr. Chairman, would be pleased to do so. We we did make that statement and I think it is irrefutable. If you uh add volume to a catch basin, to catch basin system, what happens is the water in the catch basin sumps uh gets churned up for a longer duration. And as it gets churned, then the contaminants that reside in the in the sumps uh get added to the stormwater flow. So you you just don't want to make a major connection to a catch basin, to catch basin system. It's just not engineering practice.
All right, thank you. Um and I I know Mr. Malinowski uh has has a thought to share with us on that, that probably is in total agreement. I've run through my list of people that that I lined up at the beginning who wanted to be called upon. Uh oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Garrison.
No, sorry, my hand was left up, I just took it down.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Inadvertent hit, so as long as it was more than one finger, I'm 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 happy for that. Okay, uh applicant team, having, oops, Sean Colleen.
Do you want another comment on stormwater?
Uh sure, yep, we're we're going to we're going to close tonight, so if there's anything we should know, let's get it in.
Not just would it be a bad idea, there's absolutely no reason that it should even be considered to tie into the municipal stormwater system. Whether it can handle it or not, the MS four permit does not give them the ability to just jump on to a separated stormwater system. It's not whether they decrease the amount flowing into it or not. It's an illicit discharge that does not need to be permitted. We 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 can't nor should we be compelled to permit that. So I don't know why it would even be considered.
Okay, and I and I think if I'm hearing you correctly, that's the uh what I think of as the real estate slash permitting issue of forty B to the side, do they have the right to tie into your system or not?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a forty B thing, it's a it's a it's a stormwater permit. That nobody has, nobody can force their way on to the municipal stormwater system.
Right. Can't force.
We can allow it, but we can't be forced or compelled to do it, nor can we be forced or compelled to upgrade the system, which we would have to do per the permit to if we increased any flows or even touched that system.
Right, okay, got it. And 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 that, thank you for reminding us, but that is on the table, that was raised before. Good reminder.
Thank you, and those are not local regulations, those are adopted by the EPA and DEPs regulation.
Right. Okay, um all right, applicant team. You've heard a lot, you might have agreed to some of it, you might have agreed with all of it. You've heard a lot, you might have agreed with some of it, you might have agreed with all of it, you might have disagreed with a fair amount of it. Here's your chance.
So I think first, since I'd like, Michael, since the sort of stormwater is sort of fresh in everyone's mind, Michael, to respond to stormwater and then. Dave Formato can circle back to the wastewater and wells, if that's okay.
Lynn, before we get there, let me just address the the last comments from Mr. Colleen. Permission to tie into the municipal's stormwater system is a local permit. It is subject to chapter forty B. There's really no way to dispute that. It is something that is controlled locally. It is a local authority. And it falls within the category of local approvals that are set forth in the regulations.
And have you asked us to do that in your permit application, Paul?
It it, we don't have to. It's a local permit. Chapter forty B subsumes all local permitting requirements. It's not a waiver. It is a local permit necessary for the projects to.
Okay, unless for some reason we found some, something relating to the stormwater tie in that outweighed the regional need for local housing.
Correct. Correct. There's language in the regulations that talks about. The ability for municipality to require an applicant to contribute. To improving municipal infrastructure or whether or not it can deny based upon municipal infrastructure. And it's a very high hurdle. It has to be able to prove. That it is financially unfeasible. I'm just looking for that.
Right, okay.
Right now.
Right. Helpful clarification, thank you. If if you're done, Paul.
I am, I'm sorry.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Mike, you can go now.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Just to be clear, I just want to make it. More of a point of order that just let it be known that we're not. Putting contaminants into the system. We have designed provisions to treat for suspended solids. We've. Have measures in place to treat phosphorus controls to below what the MS four standard has. So I just want to be clear that. It was a couple of comments made that we're going to be discharging contaminants into the system, and that is not the case. Any contaminants that may be in the system are are already there. They are not coming from this site.
And and I believe, Michael, that the stormwater was was peer reviewed, the methodology was agreed to, I believe. Between you and the town's peer reviewer as well. Do you want to just talk about that?
I think the method.
I know a lot of people came perhaps after those peer reviews were done.
Yes, I, Mr. Houston and I have gone back and forth on a few items. I think Mr. Haverty had pointed out sort of. One of the sticking points that myself and Mr. Houston disagreed on as to. How we have a connection to Hunting Lane. Currently, there is water that goes to the Hunting Lane municipal system. So it's not, we're not providing a new connection. There's already a connection that goes there now. Granted, it's overflow. Through the inlet of the catch basin, we are simply just redirecting that flow. Into the side of the catch basin. So I think Mr. Haverty had sort of pointed out. I don't want to belabor that issue. But I know Mr. Houston and I have gone back and forth, and I believe we're in agreement on most items relative to the stormwater. Mr. Houston has also provided some additional. Sort of conditions relative to some additional testing for both the thirty one Hunting Lane piece and the forty one North Main Street. We are agreeable to those conditions because of some of the existing conditions. We've got some measures that are being constructed within existing houses, so it's impractical to do explotor, exploit. Exploratory digging within. An active doggy daycare or an existing barn, at least until the project. Once it gets underway, starts construction, then we can do additional test pitting in that area.
Okay. And is that the balance of the applicant's comments on stormwater?
Yes, I believe so, Mr. Novak.
Okay, thank you. Marian, 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 it's the applicant's turn.
Yeah, and I think I think David wanted to speak to the letter that he wrote. So we have. Dave from, sorry, Dave Formato from onsite engineering. To speak to some of the concerns that have been raised about the offsite wells and in the differences between the standards.
All right.
Thanks, Lynn. Mr. Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, David Formato, onsite engineering for the project proponent. Here to to talk a little bit about water and wastewater. So, you know, listen through the comments and review. The submissions as they came in via. The planning board and just a couple of general comments, maybe. Couple of points of clarification on some of the stuff that was covered tonight that maybe hadn't been brought up so that the board. You know, is aware, but at the same time, we can kind of give it to the larger items. For one, there was a, there was a comment that was made about potential blasting related to. Foundations and ledger removal and that type of stuff and perchlorates possibly contaminating water supplies. Perchlorate use in explosives is banned in state of Massachusetts, so that that's not something that could occur. And and then the other fact that I wanted to mention was. The the comments received by Mr. Denver, there was, there's a map that the town produces that includes, I mean, it was up on the screen for a little bit that showed. The zone ones and zone twos and IWPA protective radii of all the water supplies that are currently. In in town. That was incorrectly referenced. The red circles, the larger circles are actually the zone twos. Those are not the zone ones. I mean, that's very important because the zone two. Represents an area of maximum possible water withdrawal over a hundred and eighty continuous days of of withdrawal. The zone one. Is the protective radius that the state maintains. So it's very important to understand, one, that that none of the development. As currently configured is is encroaching upon zone ones of existing public water supplies, the state. The state wouldn't permit that. And then further. The proposed wells for this development, the zone ones are in compliance with. All of the state's requirements that there, that the land will be owned or controlled by. The water supply, it is not crossing the railroad, the zone one is not crossing off a property line. So that's very important for for everyone to understand, particularly the board to understand that. That, you know, any water supply that gets approved for this development. Has to meet those requirements. It's not something that can be waived. So. Those are kind of the two things that I I got out of the discussions tonight. But just in in terms of maybe of taking a step back and looking at this in a little bit more of a larger perspective. You know, hearing a lot of the comments, you know, real a lot of the stuff, obviously. You know, maintaining adequate water supply in the downtown areas is a critical. Concern for the the town, the board, and rightfully so. And and I think that, you know, if you go back to our previous discussions where we talked about in detail the permitting process, I think a lot of people are forgetting the fact that. The process of permitting these water supplies is it's very lengthy, it's very involved. And there's a lot of certainty seems like on the the town side, it seems like there's a lot of people that are throwing certainties out there when. The process hasn't started yet. So it's really hard to kind of square that circle. Relative to saying that these wells are going to do this or they're going to impact that. They may, obviously, for, you know, no one, no one is sitting here, including anyone on the project proponent team, saying that. This is a guarantee to work because admittedly, the work has not been done yet. So for anyone to represent that they're confident that. This is going to happen or that's going to happen is premature, including us, which we are not. But I will say that it's important to understand that. The processes and the talking about conditioning, the the tests and and what's going to happen. If you recall, the state has a two step process for permitting a water supply. The first is site exam approval. Which is when the development of the testing is put together. We don't just start doing testing and then show up at the state with a report that says the well produced twenty gallons a minute, here's the data. The site exam approval process involves public comment and involves. The town getting their chance to work with the state, work with us to actually come up with. A monitoring program that makes sense that that addresses these concerns. So. There is that process and it has not started yet. So it's important to understand that, you know, that will take place. The concerns that are raised are, to the extent that they're valid, will absolutely be. Considered. And I will offer that, you know, there isn't a one size fits all. Process that the state goes through with this. We've seen. Twenty four hour pump tests, we see forty eight hour pump tests, we've seen five day pump tests. Wells being pumped individually, wells being pumped simultaneously, wells being pumped individually and simultaneously. Nearby wetlands being monitored for level drops. Nearby wells being monitored for level drops, so that there is all the things that are being talked about will be considered. And there is going to be some combination of. You know, oversight mechanisms that are going to be put in place that that address these concerns. And. Lastly, I would just put on both the water and wastewater aside, the state isn't in the business of approving. Water supplies. They're not in the business of approving groundwater discharges. They're in the business of protecting groundwater. So their mandate, the regulations require that anything that gets permitted and approved. Is done so with the eye towards. Maintaining groundwater quantities and qualities for primarily drinking water. So. If a project runs afoul of that, it doesn't get approved or it gets. Reconfigured at their direction such that it that that mandate can be met. You know, so I feel like it's important to not lose sight of that, that, you know, you're not talking about mass housing, you're not talking about. Agencies that have other agendas here. Their agenda is very clear. It's enforcing the groundwater, surface water. And drinking water regulations, which have nothing to do with improving developments. It's solely with protecting groundwater and making sure that. These types of projects do not negatively impact. Groundwater for the the site, the butters, and the environment. So those are really the important issues to understand. And and take away from, you know, our our position on this is that. The process is going to vet these things and, you know, that in the end, we feel like, you know, what ultimately ends up getting approved is going to take into account and concerns that were raised tonight. And and that they will be, you know, adequately addressed.
Lynn, did I forget anything?
Um, now, that that was, that was terrific to kind of put things back in perspective. I think that, you know, the letter that Dave put together did outline that. And and, you know, we hear the, you know, the couple that lives on North Main Street, we're sorry to hear that the troubles that they're having. But that process was permitted locally under Title V. And this this process is going to be permitted by the state DEP. So it it as Dave. Stated, I I think really eloquently, there are many more hurdles that one needs to go to when they're getting a, you know, a state permit of. Of this magnitude. And and I think, you know, just in in closing for the development team, you know, we really want to thank everyone for their time, for their thoughts, I think. You know, you may not realize it or not, but we feel that, you know, you've made it a better project. We certainly feel at least the site design. Of North Main Street was was greatly improved from when we originally applied. We're happy to continue to work on on the site design of of Hunting Lane. We know there's a lot of information that. You know, has has been given to you and, you know, we fully appreciate. The way that Rick, Mr. Novak has has run run meetings and given everyone time to speak and. We, you know, I don't think there's there's more we can say at this time except, you know, thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you for saying all that. Michael Lesser, just so you're ready, I'm going to call on you next. Because while you've been waiting, you've been formulating an incredibly concise, precise verbal narrative of those wetlands protective. Conditions that you were discussing before, right?
Of course, I've actually typed it up and sent it to you in an email.
All right. Did you send it to the other side? Let's see if I've got it here.
I guess I'll send it to the other side too.
Oh, that's awfully nice of you. Thank you. Let's see.
And I guess while I'm talking, I'll say that, right, I guess I'm probably. Doing the wrong thing of repeating, but to what the. Applicant was saying about the state registering everything, I guess hopefully we made it clear that the state doesn't always deal with our local needs. And and there's a lot coming ahead, but I'm hoping that the CBA will. Add enough sufficient conditions upfront so that at least we supplement whatever the state would come up with. That's more suitable and it'd be more suitable to our needs.
All right, true, true, true to his word, Michael, did send me something, Lynn, I've just, Lynn, I've just sent it to you. Genie, I forgot to send it to you. Let me send it to you so it's in our record.
Thank you.
Basically, in short, I asked that there's monitoring of the wetlands and a number of.
Okay, now, I see three more hands up. All people who have spoken before. And I I am hopeful that. Each of them is going to begin what they have to say with what I have to say that's completely new and has not been covered before is X. Because if you don't start with that. It's going to be a fairly short hearing. I mean, everyone's been very patient with everybody else, but it's time to stop trying to advocate at each other. If you've got something to say, I want it to be something new. So. Marian, your hand was up first. Your new comment is?
My new comment is that we never said or implied that the development would add contamination. The contamination is due to stirring up of the municipal system, solids in the municipal system. And second, I thought I would just define more clearly the condition. That we would like to have somewhere in the ZBA report, and that is a. Complete calculation of how much stormwater could run off the site. Even to the to the butters or the municipal system, taking into account all of the inputs, the septic. The stormwater. And the existing groundwater condition. That's it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Paul, but you show. Your new item is? My new item is that there's been discussions during the hearings. And I wanted to know where this issue is in terms of stormwater. At one of the. One of the hearings. There were some documents and I'm having a problem finding the end of it. That there would be stormwater discharges onto my property at forty one Hunting Lane, thirty nine Hunting Lane, and easements may be necessary. And I sort of lost the thread with that. And I want to know if anybody can sort of. Tom Houston, can you help us with that? Isn't that? A a, an iteration of the issue that you and Michael Malinowski and Sean Colleen were just talking about, which is. Right now, there's surface water runoff following gravity. And it goes a couple of different places.
I think the. The discharges that we were concerned with across property lines. Were on the Pines development. They were discharges into the railroad right of way. So there is no discharge. From Apple Hill onto adjacent properties. There's a flow into the street, but not into adjacent property.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
There's no increase in those that are cross country flows.
All right. Yeah, Rick, my second point is, well. We're not finished the first point. I had specifically remembered some discussion and maybe it's moved about. Forty one and thirty nine Hunting Lane. Whose screen are we looking at? Whose screen are we looking at? I'm going to have it taken down if no one will tell me whose screen we're looking at. Genie, go once.
It says John Garrison.
Okay, Mr. Garrison, there you go.
Sorry, sorry.
All right. Remember, this this has got to be a new issue and the new issue is. Is it my second issue? We're waiting for John. Not sounding like a new issue, so please be 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 quick. I think he's trying to find where that discharge was. Okay, well. Okay, well.
Set up. While he's doing that, can I ask something about what was just discussed? In terms of, I think Dave said and other people have said that
Couldn't get it.
Water issues quickly within the purview of the DEP. What about mass housing statement that they should be fully explored at the CBA hearings? That seemed pretty explicit to me that they wanted the ZBA to get the sufficient information at the hearings because they were very compelled, well, they acknowledged based on the compelling letters that mass housing received.
Okay, Paul, that's not a new issue. You said that very well in your letter and it's on the table. We get it that you feel they have not totally explored things as required, but it's not new.
No, we're right. It's in the letter, but people have been saying it tonight and I just thought I'd explore that.
Fair enough. I think the applicant team thinks they have explored these things enough and it'll be up to the ZBA to decide whether we agree with them.
Especially the sighting was not explored at all, except for one meeting last week.
But not, not new.
Okay.
Sean Wang, something new and something new and very brief.
Yes, my new is concerning the condition. How, because we only have up to today as the chairman, as you mentioned, I just want to make sure I expressed all the things clearly to the, to the level that you will use. In my report in April 15th, so I did recommend in all the monitoring things. I want to, in summary, just to make sure we get it covered. The first thing is the overall water volume storage. Just like if you have a big tank, you can test it to open your faucet for five hours, but if you don't have any water coming in, even your test, you have enough water. But if the water recharge coming in is not enough, so if you keep going run forever, you are not going to have enough water. That's what I I want to make sure the condition should have expressly to about that aspect. The second thing, the monitoring, so it's not an easy task. We can say monitor, but all the wells is constantly using. So we have to be able to have a mechanism clearly defined in the testing that monitoring tool to show that why the well is using or is not using. If the neighbors' wells are using, how they are going to know the impact of jaw down, it's accurately refracted in the monitoring process. Third is the remediation and compensation. If down the road, we know, nobody can claim any study, including EPA, if we have all that things, we will have no problem. The world will be in peace. So means no matter how well studied you claim you do, including myself, it still could have a possibility, have a future impact. So therefore, how will the board condition it that to have a mechanism? So if there's no money or assurance to it, that's basically a condition in main, in my view. So that, so like if things happen like in Sega's well happens, and what can, that the border can condition or require to do. So that's basically the three things. And third one is a final one is about zone A. So right now, if you can see it, every well have like a circle zone two, and most of the time is actually entering well had a protection area. So IWPA is not exactly correct as a zone two. Zone two mapping is not a very easy task. So therefore, especially in the bedrock, when you pumping the well, so where? How many wells in what zone need to be monitored? Because by the fracture, that zone two can extend into an area we probably don't even know at this point. You cannot easily identify. So how to consider that kind of fracture connection zone impact? So that's a question we should consider in the condition you to explore.
Okay, but Mr. Wang, I think we've wandered away from what is really new and not covered before. And I'm going to try to keep bringing you back to that. What is really new and not covered before?
Yeah, it's just the four conditions I would like to be able to see in the, in the ZBA decision.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrison, something really new.
I hope it is, and it's a clarification to Paul's last comment about the discharge to neighbors' properties. And I apologize for my screen share screw up a minute ago, but let me see if I can do this. Is that coming up?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. This is, and this is a clarification from Tom Houston, and maybe I am misunderstanding this. But as I read this plan, located at number two and number three, these are subcatchments and they're flowing to reaches on my neighbor's property and Paul Okikio's property. Is that not what you were referring to in your, in your reference to that, Tom? I would just, I'd seek that clarification because obviously if these are discharges onto our properties or my neighbor's properties, it's something that would be of concern to us and we would like to see it as a condition that there should be easements granted, but.
This is Michael from Allen and Major. I can clarify that. Yes, there are discharges that go there now. And the reason why we show them is to gauge the difference as to what the development would impact on that property. As you can see by those that model there, especially the discharge that goes to Mr. Barrachios or Paul's property is mainly consisting of the existing house. There's actually no development that's going there now. So it's more of just a mathematical situation. The flow comes off of the property. It goes there now. And that's all we're showing. And a little bit of, of area that goes between the back of yours, I believe you're the next one sort of right of number two. You can see that there's, there's a very little area that goes there. There is some minor regrading there, but the vast majority of the watershed that went in that direction is being directed through the development as part of the stormwater system. Concern that Mr. Houston had brought up was the connection on 31, on, sorry, 41 North Main Street. There's a similar type thing. There's existing discharge that goes to a large depressed area adjacent to the railroad tracks. And that was the one that Mr. Houston and I were discussing.
And the legal principle, John, that you may not know is, under Massachusetts common law, people are allowed to drain reasonably onto their neighbors. And if they've been doing it, if the natural drainage is that way and has been that way for 25 years, continuing it is not a problem. That's as upright as a legal matter of easements. So I think that's why Malinowski probably showed those was to say, look, this is what we're doing now and we're not changing. Michael, I don't want to speak for you, but is that?
No, that is, that is correct, Mr. Novak. It's more of, so that we can evaluate if we had a change going to those properties, but as you can see by the report that what goes to Paul's property is reduced. And the vast majority of that area is untouched as part of development. The little bit of area that goes into, in between Mr. Garrison's property is actually reduced. So the volume and the flow area contributing to the back of his property is reduced because the majority of that is pulled into the development just by the nature of the grading and the stormwater mechanisms that we have. They are collected and treated on the property. So the little bit of existing vegetation that goes towards Mr. Garrison's property is less than what is there now. And there's, it's simply wooded area that drains in that direction.
All right. Thank you. So I accept that clarification. I was just misled by the drawing, I think, but thank you.
No worries. Darrell Beersley, your hand is nominally up. I know you will only speak if you have something breathtakingly new and not discussed before.
I have a question for Mr. Malinowski regarding what he just said about how the flows onto the adjoining property wouldn't change because there was no development above that point, essentially. However, there will be the leaching area discharge, which is a significant change. And there may be mounding and changing of flow patterns. And how have you evaluated that to determine that that will not change the patterns down gradient?
Mr. Malinowski?
Currently, our stormwater analysis simply looks at water that would fall from the sky onto the ground. That is what our report is entailed to do. And that, based on that, we have very little change that is happening to that area. As Mr. Formato had discussed earlier, as part of the whole wastewater treatment process and the evaluation, the mounding analysis and all of those calculations and analyses will be developed at that point. And that's when a lot of of that will be addressed. Right now, our stormwater is simply rainwater and that's all it is. It just looks at water on the surface.
Mr. Houston, is that the correct way to locate it from an engineering standpoint, given that we're going to have the discharges from a wastewater treatment plant up there, too?
We don't have information on changes in groundwater flow from the wastewater treatment plant at this time. That's going to be developed in the future under the DEP review. Mr. Malinowski's analysis is, as he said, limited to the rainwater that falls from the sky. Mr. Malinowski is further correct in saying that those are existing discharges across property lines. The difference we had at the Pines was the discharges were newly created point source discharges coming out of pipes very near the property line. That's the difference.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay.
I just want to mention that the groundwater, I mean, the mounding is the Mount Vesuvius that's sort of hanging over my head.
Okay. We appreciate that. Thank you, Homer. Your hand is up. You have a new issue which has not been raised or discussed before. You're nodding your head. Please go ahead.
I don't think it has been discussed. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that you know, I have a tremendous amount of concern about our fragile water system. I'm not in a butter. I live at 43 Mill Street in Sherburne. And I have a huge farm next to me with one person living on it. But I think what hasn't been brought up is that we're in a different world now than we were even two or three years ago. We're in a drought. We're going to continue to be in a drought. And building can, just cannot proceed based on standards that were applied even two or three years ago. Water is like oil now. And I think we've just got to do everything we can to protect it. And this development to me sounds like a terrible idea.
Okay. And while I appreciate that, the water impacts of this development have been discussed at great length.
I, to me, it sounds like a disaster. I'm not a geologist.
I didn't say that I disagreed with your conclusion. I just said it's not a new issue or a new set of facts that you're bringing up.
Okay, I just didn't hear anyone talking about how we're in a different world now than even a few years ago. We are.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else have anything new? All right. I think from the applicant's standpoint, it sounds like you're ready to have us close the hearing. That's correct. And stepped out of the room. We'll have her cat speak for her.
I can speak for her, Mr. Chairman, yes.
I'm sorry. I needed a bathroom break. I apologize.
No, no, we all have to do it. We all have to do it.
I'm sorry, Paul. Why don't you go ahead and speak for me?
Just Watching's hand is up. I don't know who Just Watching is. So I really, and Deshaun Wang, you've had an awful lot of your time. I really.
My name is Susan Tyler.
Okay, Susan Tyler. You've got under one minute to tell me something you've got absolutely new because we've been doing, Susan, let me finish. We've been doing six months of hearings and people simply repeating each other and saying, I feel this way is not helpful. So go ahead.
I don't want to repeat. I was at the selectmen's meeting. I was on the agenda there and I've been paying to back and forth between two meetings here. I don't know if you've touched upon 41 North Main. I know you've been talking a lot about the stormwater.
You absolutely have, ma'am. Absolutely.
Well, I just wanted to say, as a member of the Traffic Safety Committee, there have been numerous studies that have all involved the downtown and the traffic and the intersections and certainly on Powder House Lane. And Traffic Safety Committee has had great concerns on traffic.
Yes, ma'am. But that is absolutely not a new issue. If you have been following these hearings, it's been very extensively discussed.
I have, and I'm sorry I didn't. I was not able to attend all of this night. I just want to be on record that traffic safety is very concerned and numerous studies are also having concern. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all in the record. Deshaun Wang?
Yes, I just emailed you.
Let's start with what's new.
I'm trying to email the condition. So before the end of the day, I saw I have to get it. You know, heads up. So I'm sending you.
Okay, all right. And so Darrell, Darrell Beersley has tried to send some in, some detailed stuff. I'm going to, let's see, who did you send it to? Me, Jean, Ellen, but I'm going to send it to Lynn and Paul.
We did receive the ones from the ConCon, about ConCon.
Michael Lesser, yes.
Michael Lesser's we got. Is there another one? There's two more coming?
There's one coming from me right now, which was written by Darrell Beersley for the Board of Health. And I think the Sean Wang's just landed in my inbox. Okay, and he didn't send them to anybody else, so I will send them right now to Jean Guthrie, Lynn, and Paul Haverty.
Yeah, I can get into everybody on our side.
And then they're, okay, so now those are in the record. Okay. Got it, got it, got it. Okay. Fellow board members, gleefully entertain a motion to close the hearing, which point I'll get a chance to use my last prop.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes.
As we're going to proceed, I do want to make a motion to deny the application of the applicant at some point. I can make it now or I can make it at our next meeting.
I think that comes at our next meeting. I've tried to be clear with the applicant that all possible outcomes are on the table. The ones I listed, I'm going off the top of my head, were lack of site control, grant, grant outright, grant with conditions and deny. I think those are the four options that I spelled out too earlier, Paul. And I think those are four options under the statute. So I think all of those are are on the table for deliberation. And I don't think we need to make that motion during our hearing. Paul, let me know, but I, you know, we're going to have to decide now.
No, Mr. Chairman, you do not have to decide now. You have 40 days from the close of the hearing to deliberate on your decision.
Right.
Well, I will clarify, my motion is based on lack of site control. And I will, I will hold that till the next meeting we have.
I don't think, even if we, even if we all agreed with that tonight, I don't think we have to do it tonight. I think, I think if we reach that conclusion, we would be on our bound. I'm looking at. I think, I think if we reach that conclusion, we would be on our bound, and I'm looking at you, Paul, to tell hack right away. Because that's, the regulations do say that if we make that determination. But we haven't made it yet. We've left, we've left it open and tonight's update was the facts haven't really changed. Is that satisfactory answer, Mr. Fitch?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Right.
With that being said, I moved to a closed meeting.
All right. Move to close the hearing. Is there a second, Mr. Stafford?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so we're going to close the hearing. We'll have to set another date to start our deliberations. Thank everybody for your times. We're going to vote on the motion made and seconded to close the hearing for 31 Hunting, 41 North Main Street. All in favor, I voting roll call. Mr. Fitch, why don't you go first?
Jonathan Fitch.
I.
Ron Stafford.
I.
Rick Novak with a little gavel. I. We're closed. Now, board members, let's talk about, and thank, thanks, with many thanks to everybody for your patience and, and, and good manners. I know there's a lot of strong disagreement here, but, but people have been extremely decent about it and, and I, I personally am grateful to all of you. Board members, when do you want to meet to talk about this? We have a, discussed on June 2nd.
Second.
Yeah, so we can't do June 2nd.
And the first two Mondays in June are out for me.
Okay. What's the calendar here? The ninth is a Wednesday. How do, how do Wednesdays work for you guys?
Ninth.
I said the ninth.
I can do that.
I can also. That'd be fine.
Okay. All right. Moved and seconded. What, next meeting, Wednesday, June 9th, 7:00 PM. Just, just board discussion, but open meeting. All of you can, can watch us and have as much pleasure doing that as, as you would expect. Stop laughing, Gina Guthrie. All right. I entertain a motion to adjourn then for the evening. Let's.
Remove the, we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call. Novak, I.
Fitch, I.
Stafford, I.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good.
Chairman, before we sign off.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you very much. You were in a very efficient and very fair hearing process and I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we must have made a big mistake, guys. We'll have to go away on that. All right. Thank you, Mr. Habbert. We appreciate it.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.